Good morning and welcome to the July 16, 2019 Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting. I'll call this meeting the order. Madam Clerk?
The closed session agenda, item one, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957.6, county designated labor negotiator Judy Hawkins, regarding employee organization Calaveras County Sheriff's Management Unit.
Any public comments seen done?
Item two, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957.6, closed session with county designated labor negotiator Judy Hawkins, regarding employee organization Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association.
Public comments seen done?
Item three, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957.6, closed session with county designated labor negotiator Judy Hawkins, regarding employee organization Calaveras County Deputy Sheriff's Association.
Public comments seen done, we will recess to closed session. Good morning and welcome back to the July 16, 2019 Board of Supervisors meeting. We are coming out of closed session. Do we want to report out?
Reported today's closed sessions, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957.6, county designated labor negotiator Judy Hawkins, regarding employee organization Calaveras County Sheriff's Management Unit. There was no reportable action taken. Item two, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957.6, closed session with county designated labor negotiator Judy Hawkins, regarding employee organization Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association. There was no reportable action taken. And item three, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957.6, closed session with county designated labor negotiator Judy Hawkins, regarding employee organization Calaveras County Deputy Sheriff's Association. There was no reportable action taken.
Thank you. If you're able, will you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Move on to announcements?
This is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public. It's not me.
Somebody have a... Is this mine? Okay. I think we're good. Oh, you're ready? Nope. They're ringing in my ears. Are there any announcements from the board? From staff? Thank you. We'll move to general public comment.
Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Mr. Peddow?
Yes, sir.
You may begin.
There was a meeting held in McCollum Hill a couple of weeks ago sponsored by the Public Works Department, and it was not advertised exactly correctly, but the young man there was extremely courteous, answered a lot of people's questions. Unfortunately, I received information at that time which I find unacceptable. You may recall, this piece of paper is what you handed me one year ago tomorrow when we met down at the Gwynne Mine to discuss the ongoing unreasonable deterioration of Gwynne Mine Road. And I've been complaining for years, hello to the new supervisors, you're a welcome breath of fresh air. I just couldn't deal with this subject politely, so I've stayed away. I was told at that meeting, according to your personal notes on this piece of paper, it was expected that Gwynne Mine Road to be fixed last year by October. At the meeting, the young man who seems to have the best grasp on things, as he was the one that sent the packages to the various other government agencies involved, says that it won't be completed this year either. Now, since this is my only business, and everything I have is all in on this, I can't accept another year of being stalled on a project that could be completed in two weeks if the political will existed to do so. Gwynne Mine Road is a key secondary emergency escape road. If any of the supervisors have not been down it to Middlebar Bridge, I recommend you do so. It's one of the most beautiful roads in the county. It accesses the coast of Crest Trail, the kayak takeout facility at East Bay Mudd, and the fishing bridge, which John's father was greatly involved in getting fixed with a lot of federal money. The fact is, the road was allowed to go into disrepair. The county is responsible for it, and any dollar they take from any other agency is inappropriate. It's to be maintained by the county. It wasn't. During the storms, it's been allowed to deteriorate further. It is not safe to drive on yet. Waze and Google advise you to take that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stroud?
Good morning. It's good to see you this morning. I wanted to tell you about a little event that happened yesterday that pleased me to no ends. I had a conversation with your CIO, and he was very pleasant. He addressed my concerns, and I think you've made a fantastic choice here. Maybe he wasn't the first choice, maybe he wasn't what you would consider qualified, but I consider him qualified. And to be qualified for the position, in any position, is a willingness to learn. And it's also a willingness to reach out and help those people that have needs. And he's done both those things. So treat him with respect, treat him with dignity. Don't work him too hard, don't ask him to do things that he's not supposed to do. And Mr. Alt, publicly, thank you for what you have done. And I look forward to you being with the county for many years, hopefully. This shouldn't be... Maybe this won't be your last job in the position of CIO. Maybe you'll go on to greater, even greater things. We're a small county. And yeah, good choice, good choice. We have some time. I'm very excited today. I found out that some of the county employees are going to be visiting me in San Francisco. They're going to be doing the marathon, the San Francisco Marathon, at the end of the month, and I can't wait to see them. So that's going to be fantastic. I'm not going to do the marathon. I'm far from in shape these days, but the chance to see them will be pretty spectacular. I hope that all of you are doing well. I was having a conversation with somebody that has an economic interest in the county yesterday, and somebody that, well, is a client, and he couldn't be here today, but he said that one of the greatest problems the county has is lack of long-term goal-setting and keeping of elected officials in office, that many times that elected officials turn over far too quickly. And, you know, all of you are either first timer or redreads here. I like that term, redtofinelli. But hopefully, all of you will stay in office this time around. You know, you're not the best and the brightest, many of you, but you are very representative of the county, and that is all that counts. That is all that counts, is that you represent your constituents. You don't represent factions of your constituency. You don't represent...
Thank you very much. Ms. Cortez?
The general plan has been changed by the commissioners for your approval, and I do not agree with a lot of the things that they have done. One of them is they've changed a lot of things that take away your ability to make decisions and puts it in the hands of bureaucrats, and I don't agree with that. I would also like to tell the supervisors that weren't here when I told this story. One of the reasons that I am so adamantly opposed to pot growing is that a childhood friend that I had and have, we used to ride horses together when we were girls and have some good times, and her... Two of her grandchildren were murdered by a madman wielding a pitchfork, and three of her other grandchildren were there also, and the only illegal substance in his body was marijuana. I have a lot of reasons that I'm opposed to making marijuana socially acceptable. And one of them is that it stays in your body, it does not dissipate quickly, it stays and builds up, and that influences people. I am against anything that takes away people's inhibitions because then people will make bad choices that they would never have made if they weren't influenced by something that took away their inhibitions. And then it becomes habitual, the behaviors become habitual, and the drug becomes habitual. And then people want more of it to get the high or whatever it is. Anyway, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Other public comment? Captain Ballard?
Good morning. Hey, so we've been going around on the fire evacuation map and doing a lot of trainings. What I'm here to do is ask for each 20 supervisors. Had a lot of interesting stuff in Maria Callaway's district, and what we came up with was a train the trainers type thing. And what I'd need to do from each one of you guys is, if you could, get some individuals in your communities, preferably from homeowners associations, I don't care how many it is. We want to put on a training for them about the first week, second week in August, and in order for them to be able to... Because what we found was going out and doing those things wasn't enough for our community. So if we can train individuals to teach people that they know, trust, and love on how to get on the computer, use the application, and then also sign up for Calaveras Alert, I think that's probably where we need to be. So if you can, get some names for me. Either get them to myself or Chad, and then we'll set up the training. And I think that's probably going to be the best impact for our evacuation planning, is to get people trained comfortable to teach other people. All right? So if you can get that to me as soon as I could, I'd appreciate it, and then I'll do the training in second week in August.
Thank you. Captain Ballard, do you think you could send an email out to us as well with that direct request?
Absolutely.
That would lead your first track.
Absolutely. I'll even put an emoji on there for you. Running from a fire.
Yeah.
Okay.
Captain Ballard, would that be... My trainer over here. Would that be the 6,500 number that they would call you on?
Well, they could call the 6,500, and then the message will get to me. What I probably really need is obviously their names and their contact information, and then I'll get ahold of them and set up the training. And we'll do it up at the S.O.
Thanks, Captain.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Newman?
Good morning. Bonnie Newman from Double Springs. As you know, over the past couple of years, I've been sharing tales from Double Springs. Today, I'd like to follow up with my story about the mini castle on Double Springs. It was built in the 1800s by a Scotsman, as you know, hand-hewn rock from the prison in Ione. And it was bought by, I believe it was the Wheat family in the 1880s or the 1890s. And the little girl that grew up there eventually married and lived there her entire life with her husband Percival Hunt. About the same time those 12 miners died on Double Springs in the 60s, another tragedy happened on Double Springs. It wasn't quite as notorious. One day Percival come into the house and told Sadie, "Hun, I think we got bats in the attic." She says, "What you going to do about it?" And he says, "Well, I think I'll fix it, I reckon." So he went out to the barn, got his ladder, got his box of powdered sulfur, went up in the attic and poured out a pile. And as was common to do in those days, he lit the pile of sulfur, because the fumes will kill anything, bats, rats, mice, earwigs. Sadie was down in the kitchen, and she says, "You know, he's been up there quite a while." So she didn't like climbing ladders, because she always wore skirts, but she got up on that ladder, pushed open the door, and found Percival unconscious on the floor of the attic. They retrieved him, and as she told me, he was never the same after that, and he died six months later. I was reminded of this when they were talking about cannabis farms lighting piles of sulfur. And I knew it triggered some story that I had heard, and the story was about the demise of Percival Hunt. Of course, Sadie lived there 30 more years before she died, but if I could remember all the stories that woman told me, I bet you I could write a book. It was all recorded by the Historical Society on tapes, which have probably deteriorated.
Thank you very much, Pam.
Thank you.
Tom?
So a few Tuesdays back, I stood here and commented on the day that three out of the five of you chose to appoint Mr. Fierino to the Planning Commission, and advised you that in a lot of recorded statements publicly made, he'd clearly articulated a bias that would preclude him from being able to impartially decide rezoning hearings specifically. And as I'm sure most of you know, on his first opportunity to do so, he made my observation seem like a prophecy, and citing nothing other than his belief that the applicant would desire in the future to use that farm for cannabis cultivation, which would, under the conditions, be a completely legal land use at the time. He voted the way I knew he would vote, and I had told the board that I questioned the utility of appointing a guy who should have to recuse himself at every rezoning hearing, especially in light of the fact that direction to staff to create an ordinance was going to and has begun to lead to a spate of rezoning applications. And I just looked at the fee schedule a minute ago, and it cost an applicant just under $7,000 to have that be heard by a completely biased individual. And Supervisor Toffinelli, when you appointed him that day in the face of massive public concern, you assured the concerned public that you had a recourse if he did exactly what he did, and that would be that a vote of three out of the five of you could remove him from that position. And if county council doesn't convince him that he ought to recuse himself, which I believe they should, and he did exactly what he did in front of council on tape, and I hope you've all seen it, I've watched it a couple of times, don't know what else to say other than I hope the board and the Planning Commission does better than this by the people of this county. And leaving him in that position and having him continue to behave the way he has thus far, Supervisor Toffinelli, I think, reflects poorly on you. It gives people the impression, perhaps rightly so, that he's there specifically to treat one class of people different than all the rest. And I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. There is no further public comment. Seen none, I'll bring it back to the board and to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Thank you. Board members, anybody wish to pull an item? Staff? Public?
Yeah, number six.
Number six? Okay. So motion on the remainder.
I'll move the remainder.
Motion by Supervisor Mills is our second.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stopper. All favor?
Aye.
Posed, passes 5-0. Move to item six.
Item six is from the Elections Department to adopt a resolution ordering a special election on November 5, 2019, allowing the City of Angels to submit two measures to the voters for approval.
Ms. Rinkey, you have some questions?
Good morning. Vicki Rinkey. Yes, I have a couple of questions. I hope that we can hear from the Registrar's office. One is, is this the only thing that will be on the ballot in November? And secondly, how much will this November 5 election cost the county and city? And what would it be if they just moved it to the March election date? Would that be less cost to the taxpayers? So that's kind of my question. I'm curious, is the cost, and why not move it to March? Thank you.
Questions from the board. Madam Clerk, would you like to... Do you want to rebuttal or inform us? Tell us the answer.
You can answer questions if you like. Rebecca Turner, county clerk, recorder, Registrar of Voters. They can't put it on the march because it's a tax, and a tax cannot be put on a primary election. So that would prevent them from doing so. There are cheaper recourses for elections, however, this is the date they've selected. It doesn't cost the county anything because it's the city's election entirely. Sorry, I ran over here a little...
Culturization.
Other than that, yes, it will cost the city probably $25,000 to $30,000 for the election.
Thank you very much. Questions from the board? Or motion?
I'll move it. I'll second.
Moved by Supervisor Stopper, second by Supervisor Mills. All favor?
Aye.
Posed, passes 5-0. Move on to the regular agenda.
Item seven is from the Administrative Office to receive a report from the CIO regarding the state of the county for the first 90 days, provide direction regarding the CIO's annual goals, and set priorities for the fiscal year.
Thank you. Mr. Alt, you have the ball.
Good morning, Chairman Guermendi, members of the board, and the members of the public that have packed the room. They must have seen the agenda and my guest speaking event here. I am Al Alt. I have the pleasure of serving as your CIO. Before we get started, I'd like to thank the board once again for giving me the pleasure of serving the county that we all live in and are so proud of. So today, we're going to cover our major points. Will be one of the things I committed in our discussions in the hiring process was providing you an assessment after about 90 days in office. We're just a little shy of that, but we couldn't line up a Tuesday with the exact 90 days, so it'll be about 78 days or so. After reviewing the assessment, we'll look at setting my goals for the fiscal year and how those align with the board priorities that were set in January of 2019. And then we'll have an introduction to some longer-term planning, strategic planning. So that's a quick overview. Before we get started, the notion of goals, priorities, objectives, strategic planning, there's an awful mishmash of vocabulary that can be used. And just so we start on the same page, I just wanted to be clear on what I'm referring to in terms of the presentation. A goal for me in this presentation is an observable and measurable end result. In many cases, they can be annual or longer term. In this case, depending on how my goals are set, we'll look at whether they'll be this year or overlap into next year as well. And then underneath a goal, we'll talk about objectives, which are concrete things that I'll do to meet the goals. In the context of this presentation, we'll talk about priorities. In this case, I mean the priorities that the board set on January 2019, not to be confused with strategic priorities or long-term priorities, but that specifically, which you discussed January 15, 2019. As we move into strategic planning and talking about longer-term planning, I'll refer to strategic focus areas. Those are long-term organizational goals, sometimes termed strategic objectives. And then last, we'll talk about long-term planning, and for the case of our discussion, I'll be referring to that as strategic planning and the purposes... The purpose of development of a multi-year, longer-term plan that guides the course of our organization. The CIO's goals, why are we here at 90 days to talk about the CIO's goals? From a more practical standpoint, I made the commitment in the hiring process that I would be focused on execution, and one way that I can do that is by discussion of our goals and making sure that I'm clear on what the expectations of the board are. And we talked at quite lengthy in the hiring process, so this is me bringing back the commitment I made in that process. From a more functional perspective, when we entered into our agreement between the board and I, there is language in there that says the board sets annually the CIO's goals. So this is my bringing back to the board, meeting the requirements of our employment contract. Ultimately, these goals will help you all in completing my annual evaluation that is to be done in April of 2020 or thereabouts. And then last, the CIO's goals are really a function of me being able to ensure that my work is consistent with what you want me to be. my work is consistent with what you want me to be focused on and how we move the organization My assessment after approximately 90 days, I really want to hit on my assessment. One of the things I committed in the hiring process was that I would bring informed opinions back to you. So while I'll term this my assessment, this isn't me just independently deciding after about three months where our organization is. I'll talk about the inputs, both internal and external, certainly influencing my opinions of the organization after about 90 days, or interactions that I've had with the board, not only in our open meetings, but in individual meetings that I've had with each of you, hearing about what your priorities for your district are and commitments you've made and how I can help move those forward. Had quite a bit of employee interactions through facilities tours and what I've termed Donut Fridays. Officially, Donut Friday doesn't have to occur. Because I am the CAO, I can have it on any day, and it doesn't have to be Friday. So it's really been, Donut Friday has been one function of management by walking around or wandering around, so this term here, really just being out on campus and interacting with people when I have opportunity to ask who they are, what their role is, and what are their concerns from an individual basis about where we're at in the county, and what are things they think I should be paying attention to. And I've had a great deal of feedback from our employee constituent base by management by walking around. As you know, I've had, also had community engagement. You've heard this in my weekly reports, attending Music in the Park, coffee with the community, presenting at Good Morning Calaveras, attending the senior volunteers luncheon, among other things, but also with a series, through a series of individual meetings with area leaders outside of our entity, whether that's fire chiefs or other public entities, and hearing what their thoughts and feelings are on the county and how we work with them as partners. And a really important piece that I had a lot of detailed input on, I think it was, it's a really key piece, and you'll see how key as we move forward, I asked the department heads to provide a SWOT analysis or their opinion on strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats for our county as a whole and our operation. I really appreciate the work that the department heads did on that. If I didn't have 100% participation, it was really close. I didn't count all of the feedback. It was very thoughtful, very constructive, and very positive as well. So thank you to the department heads for that information. So since I've introduced it, we'll go right into the SWOT analysis. What I did from all of the feedback is theme out basically the things that appeared the most out of the department head's feedback, and then also aligned them with other things that I'd heard out, you know, through my other interactions, both internally and externally. Really critical thing that I want to touch on that I've observed myself, and I know you know this, but it's really important to emphasize, the number one thing that came up over and over again in the strengths is the quality of our employee and our people, frankly, just being amazing. So you'll notice the strengths list is a little bit shorter than the weaknesses. That's not because there were less strengths noted, it was because number one, employees being quality and amazing employees came up over and over and over again. It was such a, out of all the themes, that was the biggest thing that came out of all of the four categories. So that contributed to a little bit shorter list in the strengths. The amazing employees that we do have have a very strong sense of community, very close-knit, as you know, and you've experienced it as well. Our employees have a deep pride in serving the county. We're all wearing our pins, but our staff, our employees, they ride for the brand as well, and they're very proud of the work that they do serving our public. We're resilient. We get thrown a lot of curveballs here. You know that, and before my time, we've had how many disaster proclamations, yet we bounce back, we do the work to push through the unfortunate incidents, and then we still keep the county moving forward. And quite frankly, our folks are resourceful. We do more with less. We continually have challenges pushed on us from the state, mandates, whether they're funded or unfunded, and we still get the work done, and we still keep showing up every day to do the work of the public. And so before I move on to the rest of this, I just want to circle back to you. That's really, really comes down to the employees that serve at the front counters and have fingers on the keyboard, and we really owe them a debt of gratitude for serving our public the way they do. Weaknesses. All organizations have them. These are not uncommon to many organizations. Communication, and I would key that probably most closely to leadership and the turnover that we've had in this position in the CAO seat. There hasn't been a consistent message that, a unified message from both the board and the CAO that's been consistent to our employees, to our department heads, that our folks are able to unify around and focus on. Accountability, and again, I'll bring this back to my office in particular. You know, we really set the tone of making sure there's plans and timelines, and that when you ask that priorities be met, that we focus on getting those priorities down, done, and delivered in a timeframe that you expected. We all know that turnover is a challenge for us. That impacts, obviously impacts the service to our public, and it's a huge drain on our resources, frankly, as well. You're aware of our facilities. You can walk around and tell the age of our facilities, but really, until you peel back and go into some of the closets, and I'm going to talk about this more in my goals, but until you see some of the things that we've patched together with baling wire and duct tape, we have a lot of work to do on our facilities, and quite frankly, I'll talk more deeply about it. But frankly, to me, it's our largest unfunded liability that we have with the risk that we have sitting kind of, you know, on the roofs or in closets that we don't see just walking around the campus. Weaknesses, planning, that's why we're here. You know, we're not only setting goals, but we're going to look at the opportunity in making those goals be longer term and how we connect to a distinct direction for the next three, five, or 10 years of the county. One of the things I know you're aware of, you asked me about it in the interview process, but we have outdated policy. Everything from personnel policies to our full county ordinances are outdated, and they need a rework and to be modernized. Training and development has suffered. While our staff is amazing, we don't have the resources that we've had in the past. We're resource-challenged, obviously, so we don't have, while we do some training and development, we don't have organized plans on how we move employees through their career trajectory and how we train them to be prepared for succession and filling greater roles in the county. And then something that really resonated consistently through all of the feedback, and this is internal and external, I don't want to attribute this to any one group, was just the constant negativity, whether it's, you know, us looking at ourselves as less because we're a small county or a rural county, or just the own self-talk about, well, it's Calaveras County. And that really came through that we need to link back to the pride in serving the county, and we live here for a reason. We choose to live here. We have amazing natural resources. We have an amazing county, and it's really an opportunity, and I'll talk about this in opportunities, to step away from that negativity and really think of us moving in the future, driving this county in a direction where we really are a beacon for how we're Opportunities, out of all challenges, we always have opportunities. So I thought it was quite astute that the feedback that we got along with the turnover is that it presents an opportunity to have new staff. That gives us new thinking, new ideas, fresh eyes on the challenges that we have, and it really gives us an opportunity to build a new culture. I don't know what new looks like, but I think that keys back to, you know, really being connected to pushing the negativity out and bringing a new culture in that focuses on we're well-run, we're organized, we're focused on a distinct direction, and we're all quote-unquote paddling in the right direction for the good of our public. We noted weaknesses in training and development, but as we bring in new staff, we have opportunity to look at staff development and training programs, cross-training across departments. And this is one that was really key, and you'll see it pop up again, you'll see it emerge later in my goals, but employee engagement and empowerment, making sure that our employees at the frontline not only have the training, but they have the opportunity from their department heads through the CAO to the board to fulfill what their job duties are and make sure that they're trusted to carry out their work and that they're engaged in the work that we do, and they know why we come to work every day and do what we do. Collaboration is a real opportunity to not only work amongst like departments and those that have natural connections, but also work across all of the county departments and look at process redesign and how we may improve the efficiency of our work through the collaboration. Threats, real quickly, failure to plan. We're here to plan. That's always a concern in any organization, but the very purpose of this meeting is to plan. So it's a big step for us working on that. Facilities, again, I touched on this. This is a huge issue for us. You'll see it emerge in my goals again, and us bringing back a more thoughtful plan on, you know, not the things that we see day in and day out, but the really, the hidden things in our systems that we don't, our mechanical systems, that we don't really see on a daily basis. Turnover, obviously, is a threat. Originally, when I put the themes together, I brought to the department heads the notion of unfunded mandates, and department heads astutely pointed out, it's not just the unfunded mandates, it's actually the funded mandates that cause us a threat as well, because we can plan as well as we want here and set the course of the county and the direction we're going, and the state can decide at any time to pass down a new mandate to us. And even if it comes with money, it challenges the planning and the priorities we've set here. And so I thought that was pretty astute by department heads to put that forward. Of course, we're always worried about recession. We've been running on high for quite a long time. The economy's outpaced any past growth, and so at some point, we know after growth comes contraction. Whether or not it'll be a recession, it's obviously, our folks have been through this, you have been through this from the dais, that the concerns of this never really go away. It's always, it's always a concern that lingers. Lack of higher education, that came through quite clearly, and Chairman Garmendi and I, that's near and dear to our hearts. We know that that's something we've talked about quite a bit, but it's recognized quite a bit by our department heads and frankly, by our external partners as well, that we're all challenged by having a trained, diverse workforce, and partly because there's not educational opportunities here. And for our kids or adults seeking retraining to get higher education, they have to leave our county. So we suffer for that loss. So that's a threat for us. And then, of course, disaster. That's never far from our mind. That's something we can't control, but it seems that we have our unfair share at times, and that's certainly something that we try to plan for, but we never know when those will come, and those will always represent a threat for our county. So I know I hovered on the strengths, weaknesses, threats, and opportunities, but those really are a driver as we get into longer-term planning, and I thought it important for you to see that this isn't only my assessment, these are observations that I share, but those were astute observations that came from department heads and discussions with our employees and external partners as well. So it was pretty well-rounded, pretty comprehensive view of things. So how do those work into my goals? And I know I'm moving through this quite crisply, but we're going to have time for discussion, and I'll stop, and we can talk about those here in a few minutes. But you won't typically see accountability as a goal. Usually, you want your goals to be nice, tight, measurable goals, time-specific. But I thought it quite important because the feedback was around that, that I have a goal of accountability, and then we'll have objectives under that goal if you choose to put this forward as one of my goals. And really, the objectives would be planning, reporting, us setting plans, when you have priorities that we set, distinct plans that you see that are time-specific, can have quite distinct steps in completing what the directive is that you've asked us to carry out. So I would say while the goals, accountability, that the next step below that is, you should expect from me quite clear objectives and very specific things and plans that are written that you have opportunity to pull apart and press back on if we need to bring the timelines in or if we have opportunity to move timelines out. I've touched on this already, facilities. I don't want to overemphasize it and create any sort of scare, but I had an opportunity with Patrick. We spent a lot of time literally going in the closets, and if you haven't done that, we should take you on that tour. Our folks internally have done a fantastic job being resource-challenged and keeping the mechanical systems going, but our mechanical systems are very aged, and they only last so long as we continue to, you know, put patches on them. One of the biggest items of concern under mechanical systems are HVAC units. We have 90 HVAC units that run on R22, which is no longer available. And I hope I get the numbers right. Patrick might be out watching there and saying, oh my God, he's not recalling the numbers of the chemicals. So we run on R22. It's no longer available. All 90 units at some point are going to have to be converted, and some point, by some point, I mean within the next two or three years, to run on R410. That conversion alone is quite expensive, but on top of the conversion, we'll be putting the conversion on aged units that are within two or three years of end-of-life. So if we don't look at, you know, how we'll turn those over and have more efficient and newer systems, we're going to be retrofitting end-of-life systems, which is a significant cost. Always important to me is just access to our facilities. Obviously, we're a public entity, and for any individual to be able to enjoy interaction with the local government, we need to focus on access. And so I'll be, if adopted by you, bringing back more information about access and plans. And then also plans for board-approved projects. You know, we talked about this in, I think it was at, either at CAO's Recommended or at Preliminary, the obvious interest in the board in making sure we fulfill the projects that have been approved, and part of this accountability is bringing back the board-approved projects with the schedule of how they'll, when they'll start, when they'll end, anticipated completion dates. This one is a big one to me, employee engagement. One of the things that I know and I committed to you all in the interview process is that at the end of the day, to provide good customer service, or in our case, good service to the public, our employees have to be engaged. They have to feel valued, they have to want to come to work every day. And we do have great employees, but frankly, the void in leadership from the CAO chair, just in turnover, not in any particular individual, has kind of caused a malaise, for lack of a better term. And so if adopted by the board, I'd like to bring back to you some distinct objectives of things that I will do to engage with the employees, hear from them what their challenges are, not on working conditions per se, but things that they have thought through themselves, maybe challenges that they have solutions for, or process redesign that they have recommendations for, or more specifically, things like staff recognition. If we're going to develop staff recognition, which I think we should, then staff ought to be involved in designing it. So I just don't pull something off the shelf and say, hey, isn't this great? We have staff recognition, and it's not meaningful to them at all. So this is a real specific way that I want to engage more broadly with our employees, and I've got some ideas, and if this comes one of my goals, then I'll bring some more specific plans back on that. Obviously, necessary under our goals, everything for us always comes back to revenue and fiscal stability, and I think we need a deeper look at not just our budget, but what our planning looks like in terms of any potential revenue streams, either existing revenue streams that we already know about, that we aren't maximizing, or haven't thought of yet, or any new and potentially, I wouldn't say cutting-edge, but any new options for revenue generation and how we can bolster our revenue streams that come from the state and from our other fees and taxes. And then along with that, implementing tight budget development policy. So we're all aware, the board and certainly me, when I'm engaging with the department heads on budget development, that we're really specific about what our policies are in terms of budget development, so that we're always pretty tight on what we put forward. So those, that's a quick run-through of my goals, but before we have discussion on those, I wanted to also run through the priorities and then show you how I envision my goals, should you choose to give me direction on those, how they would align with the board priorities. So I pulled a quick, I wasn't here in January 15, 2019, when you talked about this particular item, but I went back and pulled some snippets of it. And I think it's important to make a distinction about, this was direction to staff on 2019 steady sessions and aligning the priority of the items of work. Now, I know you had steady sessions in their direction that came out of those steady sessions, but there's pretty good alignment with the work that's been coming forward in the steady sessions that you've had. You had steady, or at least- You had study, or at least discussions on PG&E settlement on these dates, and we're well into the implementation. Non-county entities have started submitting for reimbursements for, for items, so we're moving, moving through the distribution of those, those funds. I'm not sure what Public Works and Fire were specifically, but that was addressed on 319, so that one's been completed. As you know, we still have discussion to move forward on cannabis cultivation. You talked about having policy discussion. I'm not sure the specific detail of that, but I've kind of framed out a way to step into that. I suspect we were talking about broader policies that might ultimately become ordinance. You were thoughtful about facilities, master, facilities and master plans, so obviously, some alignment there between your discussion and my goals as well. Budget long-term planning, and then Lake Tullock and short-term rentals were, were the last items. So I'll move past this one, because I, I think this is a better display. So if we look at side-by-side, my goals and your goals, or your priorities, there are priorities now, but I'll say yours only because when you developed them, I wasn't here, but obviously, we've taken them up and they're mine as well. But I tried to be thoughtful about how I would line up my goals and how they align with yours, so you can see the development. I'd suggest, and these are certainly flexible, but as we go through the study sessions, will I fit in your requests off the priorities into what would ultimately be my schedule if you adopt my goals. Revenue options and fiscal stability, we can talk about that in August, and that was pre-planning for the, the final budget, and it may be that we move that out to September. These are, you know, just kind of to show how this might fit. In September, we talk about facilities and look at, you know, what major, major projects are and what the timelines would look like. Strategic planning, should we adopt to go forward in strategic planning? We can take a deeper dive into that in October, and then some, you know, thoughts on policy and how we might structure out a review of our ordinances and some of our other policies in November. And then you'll see I jump over to December here, because Lake Tullock and short-term rentals was proposed in the third and/or fourth quarter. So that would, that would keep us on the third or fourth quarter. And I wanna make a distinction here that in my goals, I've aligned them with the fiscal year, and we'll talk about that in a moment. These were aligned with the calendar year, and I'll mention why here in a moment. And then as we continue through the year, after December, we come back up to, back to strategic planning, back to revenues and fiscal stability, kind of around the January governor's budget and pre-planning for budget development being in February. That certainly could be in March as well. And then more fleshed-out presentation on employee engagement and the efforts that I've been putting in place, should you adopt my goals in, in March. This is all hypothetical, I'm just trying to align it up so you could see how there's a mesh between if, if you should decide to move my goals forward, that there, my goals really aren't in competition at all with the priorities. They fit the priorities in that you've already set, and then set basically what would be the second half of our fiscal year, the beginning of next calendar year, going forward with, with my goals listed up here. So a couple of quick questions for discussion, and we can come back. I'll bring, bring that slide back, so you can look at my goals and the priorities. So a real question for me is whether or not we align the existing goals, my goals and/or the board priorities with the fiscal year or the calendar year. What's important about any of the priorities is if we need additional resources, and we're gonna fit those into, and we're gonna commit resources to them, they need to be fit into the budget development process. So it could impact the timing of particular priorities that we set if, if we haven't yet budgeted the resources. Say we're in December, and we're talking about a priority that's gonna need funding that if, if we don't adjust the budget, then we'd have to fit it into budget development in, in the following year. Another question for us to address here, are there any new priorities or additional goals that you see for me? Has the urgency changed for any of the priorities from January 2019? I, I think from our discussions, they're pretty much on track, and we understand the, the priorities that are up in the hopper and the urgency of those, but in case there was any other reshuffling from things we're not already working on and presenting, then this is a good opportunity to talk about it. And then in some cases, I put this up here, what's the outcome to be expected? The reason why I put this up here, here is because in that little snippet that I pulled from the board agenda in January noted that originally, the discussions on January 15th were the scheduling of the study sessions. And I know priorities flowed from, from those study sessions, and there were directions out of the study session, but it will be good to connect back with however we line up the study sessions and presentations from my goals and the board priorities, that we always, we always ask at the end of a study session, what are the outcomes? What do you expect of me? What do you expect me to convey to the department heads on how we are to fulfill the, these goals? So we're just tight on making sure we bring back to the board what, what it is you meant when we talked about something in a meeting. Having tracked back myself and tried to watch many of the meetings, I, I found it hard, not having been here, that when I was trying to track, what exactly was it that we wanted and we said as an organization, just to get real tight notes on what it was that, as, frankly, when I was in the recruitment process, what, what toolbox did I bring to you to help solve some of these problems? I found it hard for me to be able to track what it was, what problems I could try and solve through some of the discussion. So, so I'll ask in our study sessions, and when we have items like this, what, what is the outcome the board expects of us? Do you expect us to bring a plan back? Do you expect us to, you know, move forward and, and fulfill a particular item before the next board meeting, et cetera, just so that we can track against what your, what your direction is? And then, then just last, what, whether or not we wanna move around some of those study sessions or those dates? If, if, if you're inclined to move my goals forward the way they are, then whether we would stay on the timeline with those study sessions that I proposed in an earlier slide, or if we would shuffle these around, or if this looks like too tight of planning, and we might, might need to move something, you know, out of the current year and maybe put it on the parking lot for, for next year for, for my goals and/or your priorities. And so with that, I'll take a breath and come to the board and give opportunity to talk about questions about my goals and/or priorities and any discussion around that. And if you'd like to go back to any part of the presentation, please let me know, and I'm happy to flip back to whatever reference you'd like.
Yeah, you know what? Let's take a, before we get to the discussion, let's take a 10-minute break, and then we're gonna come back to the restroom. Welcome back. We'll continue our presentation and move to board discussion.
Thank you.
Mr. Stopp, are your lights on?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Gueramendi. I'm gonna, I'm gonna break up my response today, because I think there's a lot of things to address. So I'm gonna start with the notes on accountability, kind of going hand-in-hand with facilities, and the direction that's been given by the prior board, the direction that's been given by this board to start, and we'll, we'll, we'll work off of there. As we discussed, we, we, we set our priorities in January 15th of this year, and some, some of the things have worked forward. We've had study sessions on some of these issues. Some of these issues have progressed more than others. But I wanna bring up facilities, because that, you know, a lot of that responsibilities lies within the CAO's office, and the fact that a lot of things haven't been followed through. I mean, things fell off during the last fiscal year that were asked to be done by the prior board, and a lot of things that this board agrees with. The jail, the old jail, working with Ms. Yook, our DA, and getting their, their new building, and there's multiple other buildings that, you know, you know, we start taking down some of the stuff, we'll be getting some new HVACs put in when we put in those buildings, so there'll be taking down the number of ones that may need to be rebuilt or not. So this goes hand-in-hand with accountability, and there's multiple other things that need to be brought up across multiple departments that accountability needs to be held to them also, even for the appointed department heads. And in general duties for the CAO, 2.10.050, general duties. A, the county administrative officer shall supervise for the board of supervisors the administration of all county departments, offices and institutions, institutions over which the board has responsibility and control through its power to appoint the department head. The county administrative officer shall also act as administrative officer for the board in administering all policies, procedures, departments, and institutions, including those departments in which the department head is an elected or appointed officer. The county administrative officer shall attend all meetings of the board unless excused therefrom, prepare matters for the board's consideration and action, and make recommendations to the board on matters within his or her authority. The county administrative officer shall prepare and carry out administrative policies and procedures necessary to implement the directives, policies, and goals established by the board relative to the operation of the county government. It shall be the duty of each department head, elected or appointed, to provide information relating to the administrative operation of his or department upon request of the county administrative officer, and to follow the administrative policies and procedures of the county. It goes on, I'll just read the last section. While the county administrative officer is recognized as the chief administrative officer of the county, nothing in this section is intended to prevent a department head from appealing a decision of the county administrative officer to the full board of supervisors. Also in 2.10.080, it also gives you the capacity to review the separate department heads on a yearly or more often basis. I think these are things that I personally view as probably a review of the departments as we progress. Not every department needs it, but, you know, some do, and this is a good way for us to review different departments and their progress that as they, as we move forward and how they apply to our strategic plan or even our goals in, in their entirety. I think we need to, I talked about accountability on January 15th. I think we brought it up during the mid-year budget also. I know we did bring it up. There are, there are a lot of jobs that have been given direction that haven't been followed through on in the past, and we need to start holding accountable the people so that they can facilitate these projects getting finished at the discretion of the board. I'm just gonna start off with that, to start off the conversation, because I think accountability is a big thing here. Has to do with the facilities, has to do multiple others of our goals that, you know, either are progressing or stalled out because the other things are progressing ahead of them. And I definitely have quite a bit more to talk about later, but I'll start off with that.
Do you wanna, do you wanna just keep going right now?
Please, yeah. I'll collect that.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'd like to kind of tie something together, 'cause I understand what's going on with facilities. We need to finally put some dates on the table and say, "We're going to do this by." When it comes to taking down the old jail, we're never gonna move forward in establishing a new facility there, or whatever else we're gonna do, until we just finally put a date down and say, "We're gonna get it done." And this has been going on for, Mr. Gueramendi, how long have we been sitting here? And we, yeah, we've been talking, it's been all talk, and we finally just need to get, get the physical work done. And the improvements around the campus, and the repainting and the re-roofing, et cetera, those, I know those have been deal changers, so to speak, for the employees and the morale to be able to not look at what was here before. Hopefully, we can continue with landscaping and, and trying to make the place better. But I'd like to go to another subject, and that has to do with performance reviews. It's great to have a performance review for you, sir, but I think it also is valuable for our appointed department heads to be engaged in that same process. I know that when I was in business, I was having to do biannual performance reviews on my staff, and I'm not asking that we go in that direction, but I think that if, if we're going to be expecting them to be accountable, then we need to sit down with them and have those one-on-one conversations, at least annually, but I would like to see it biannually, as to just exactly where are they, and how can we, as you as a CAO or us, in our position, how can we assist? How can we help them if we're gonna give them goals, to meet those goals? And, and if it's because there's impediments in the process, if we never have those performance reviews, we'll never come to the point of, of getting rid of those impediments that might be there. So the mechanical systems, to me, are a ticking time bomb in this, in this facility. I understand about the R22, but what is, needs to be also weighed in on this is that when you're interconnecting piping in these old facilities like this, the design pressures on R410 are substantially higher than it is for R22. So I'm not so certain that, you know, we're not gonna have to do a complete, when we talk about a retrofit, we're talking about replacement of piping and everything, even in walls and ceilings, and it, it could turn into a bigger pile of worms than we really think about. So if we're talking about 90 units, just the energy savings alone, if we could start changing them out, is substantial. Or your average refrigerator in 1990 was working on seven or eight hundred-watt light bulbs. Today, it's less than a three-watt light bulb. That's really what it translates with our SEER ratings of 16s and 17s. So I'm not gonna beat up the mechanical stuff, I think everybody knows about it. But if we're going to really understand employee engagement, I wanna go back to, we've gotta get performance reviews done, and I'm not suggesting that the board itself take on every one of those performance reviews, but I do think that it is valuable, and it gives the employee a sense that they're appreciated, and they have an opportunity for those one-on-ones to have those very direct conversations about what it is that can make their job better, and what it is that's holding them back from being successful. And I will leave that piece of the conversation for now.
Just to circle around, back on what Dennis closed with, the provision in 2.10.080 and B, the county administrative officer shall evaluate the on-job performance of each department head except for elected offices. I think there, there's already stuffs in our MUNI code that provides direction for our CAO to be able to do just what you were talking about.
Thank you. I would like to add that, you know, these are good goals. I mean, they're broad. We're gonna drill down a little bit on how we're gonna get the specifics on there. Certainly, employee engage, there's just no doubt about the mechanical systems, we've got it. This is a community, this belongs to the county and all our citizens. We have to make sure it keeps standing up for another 60 years. But certainly, when we get to employee engagement, I look forward to discussion about how we can go about doing that. As you noted in your presentation, oftentimes, we don't have leadership training. We, people get appointed, and then we say, "You were great at your last job, I'm sure you'll be a great manager," and that's not enough tools for them. So, you know, that's, I think we'd all agree, we'd, you know, we have good managers and good training programs, we'll have good and happy employees as well. And so I appreciate that being one of your goals. So if there are any other comments on the goals, and I guess we'll move on to the next step.
I'd like to throw one more, one more thing in the-
Let's throw one more, one more thing in the discussion, and that is, well, actually two. One is that years ago, and I'm going back, and I know Ms. Calloway would probably remember, that we had someone in the county that wrote grant proposals and was in that constant mode of administering, understood how to administer a grant. So I just kind of wonder how much we're walking away from an opportunity, financial opportunity, because, and I know some of the fire districts now, they've got somebody that's reviewing every month and have been very successful in gaining grants for replacement of breathing apparatus and other critical pieces of equipment. Likewise, we should be focusing on those opportunities as well. And again, maybe one of the things holding us back is we don't have an administrator, we don't have somebody to properly administrate, so there's kind of a fear factor involved there. But the grant piece seems to have kind of slipped out of our radar, and it's a tremendous financial opportunity. Number two is that in the county ordinance reviews that you talked about, I would say there's thousands of pieces of that ordinance puzzle that need to be gone through, and I know many of them, some of them go back to when the ordinances were first written. So it's literally decades and decades and decades of just, and yet, policies have changed, laws have changed, the state has required additional mandates, and yet, we need to step in and be sure that our ordinances are in alignment with what the state and the federal requirements are. I know we do it as a piecemeal, but we may need to start taking specific sections of the ordinance and saying, we're going to take Title 12, we're going to take Title 17, we're going to tear it apart, put it back together and make it right, one time with an understanding. You know, that hasn't been done in a long time, so I'll leave it at that.
Ms. Calloway?
Just an easy one. Fiscal versus calendar year. I think we need to do both of them because the public generally thinks calendar year, though when you do, when we budget, we're doing fiscal year, which gets back, we've talked about facilities. That's up to the Board of Supervisors. I think the Board has been left out of this equation, and maybe that's because we're the boss, but I think there's an obligation on behalf of the Board. I don't necessarily think that we're cognizant of many of the day-to-day activities that go on and the pressures on departments, one, from just the public and work, or on board members going in and asking staff, can you help me with this? Can you help this constituent and so forth? I think part of the goals has to be the training of the Board.
Training of the Board?
Yeah, there's a difference of being a Board member. We act as a Board up here, yet when I go in and see Mr. Maurer, I'm in there as supervisor of District 3. I'm not in there just as a Board member. And I think that we have training we need to do among ourselves. I mean, we've heard lots of positive things about how the Boards, how we're interacting with each other and with staff. But I think we need to go a step further, and I sometimes look to the CAO to help us with that process. So, I mean, we can talk about facilities and air conditionings and whatever, but that's up to us at budget time, and your recommendation would be, here's a three-year plan if we spend, I don't know, $50,000 a year, $100,000, whatever it might be, we can get, we can make those changes, and we need to make that decision. And, I mean, in terms of the jail, that's something that the fire board has agreed to. We have Garmending and Telfanelli on that committee, and it's, you know, and they should be the ones seeing that those facility priorities are moving forward. That's why we did the ad hoc committee. So I also think that Board members, and this might be some of our goals, need to be going to Regional Council of Rural County meetings or CSAC meetings to get outside of our cocoon. I sort of scrolled forward and saw what you had from Mono County. I mean, we've all read Monterey County's cannabis rules, but, I mean, it's not just that. It's a whole host of things, and I strongly feel that the CAO has an obligation to help us be better supervisors and better Board members. So that's accountability. We have a responsibility in this, too. On strategic planning, our strategic items, I don't think I can address what I think we should need, what I feel we should have. I need to conchate that a little bit more. Supervisor Garmending, when you talked about strengths and weaknesses and negativity, Supervisor Garmending said, we need to just start talking positive and not talking or addressing the negative. And that starts with us here at the Board.
If I might interrupt, I've coined my own term, it's mine only, but we've all heard the term Calabama, and so my approach is Calabama to Calatopia 2025, and we're moving forward, we're going to be positive, and our view in 2020-
Cala what?
Calatopia.
Calatopia.
In 2025, we'll be the county that people are pulling our plans and our strategic plan and looking to our Board for leadership as a high-performing Board and us as a higher-performing organization.
Can we go-
That's Calatopia.
Can we make it shorter than 2025?
Well, that is only five years. That's only halfway through what I promised you in terms of my tenure here.
Got it.
And we can use that term?
Calatopia?
Not trademarked, you got it?
Calatopia?
No, it's out there.
On strengths and weaknesses, to me, there's one that is the same for both. It's that our department heads are working department heads, and that is a strength as well as a weakness.
Which one?
And under your SWOT.
Yeah.
I, yes, I think having working department heads is a strength and it's also a weakness. So we keep asking a lot of the department heads on doing the long term. At the same time, we're going in and saying, where are you on this day-to-day item? So-
I'll touch on that a little bit. By the way, I meant to hit on it for the public this year. Their presentation has one difference in the slide. Unfortunately, when I printed the copies, or when I had the copies printed, there were opportunities and weaknesses, and I don't want to overemphasize weaknesses, I had copied it in twice. So theirs is a little bit different than yours, and we have printed new copies for the public as well. So I meant to touch on that in the presentation. But this is, you know, a kind of an introduction to the strategic planning piece of this, but one of the things that I thought was really key, and you've already seen this paging ahead there, Mono County and their plan was really astute from the Board and the CAO identifying that the day-to-day work that we do is really the majority of work. It's 90-plus, maybe more percent of the work that we do. So when we overlay the projects that we have, they're certainly important projects and we need to get them done, but it's really important as we think this through, you just touched on it, our department heads are working department heads, and they fulfill day-to-day functions in addition to fulfilling the projects. And that'll be a theme when we talk about strategic planning on, you know, how we're thoughtful about making sure that we don't overlay too many specific, project-specific things, that we need to be careful about how we monitor that so that when we do deliver, we deliver quality projects and we're not just pushing them out. But that's, that working department heads is a direct effect of how much we can take on in terms of the projects.
Ms. Calloway?
There's one that is sort of, I mean, it's not for just this Board, it's probably all Boards, and it's truly been all Boards with, in Calaveras. On CAO's goals, employee engagement, et cetera, how should the Board engage? And I'm not clear on where that is, because this is not all on you. We're, if we're a team, then we need to be operating on the same-
So what I'd like to do with this, although this is put off in the dates out until March, but leading up to March, if this, this isn't a great goal, right? As Supervisor Garmending said, they're broad, they're not ideal for goals, they should be very specific and measurable. But because of where we're at, I was trying to capture some small projects or objectives under each of the goals. So in employee engagement, I'd like to have the opportunity to think that through a little bit more, ask of the department heads their opinion, and figure out a way to connect with the employees. My own idea, and this, you know, is only mine, but I've tossed it out to the department heads in conversation, I mentioned it to you all in the interview process, is that I'd like to have something like an CAO's advisory that is, department heads already have a vehicle for us to have communication, we have monthly meeting, we have interaction with them. But, and then we have our interactions, but our, you know, 600-plus employees that are not management don't have a voice into our planning nor to the CAO on things that can be improved. And so through that CAO's advisory, I don't want to make it too much like Jack and I have had committees, I'm sorry, Supervisor Garmending have had committees in higher education where we, where we committee things to death, where you get two people from every group and you get the Noah's Ark philosophy of coming to a committee and we never move anything forward. And in this case, I'd like to have a start of eight, 10, 12 volunteers that are staff that don't typically have a voice with the CAO or the Board, to be able to work with me on what are the things that they see need improvement. I'll give you something that's really simple, and I really appreciate that this came out of a Donut Friday, and a conversation with one of our employees suggested that, you know, it would really be meaningful to staff in our department, we've talked about it, we'd really like to have a water bottle filling station. Now, if a water bottle filling station is meaningful to our staff, I bet every one of us would say, let's try and find a way to get that done. If that's a key to improving employee morale and helping staff feel valuable, then those are the things I'd like to hear, from the smaller things to more project-related process redesign and improvement. Our staff have fantastic ideas, we need to give them a venue to talk about those. And my idea to start would be the advisory, and I start developing what are some recommendations, bring them back to you, those that I think we could move forward. Water bottle filling station might seem simple, and we'd like to do it, but from a facilities perspective, maybe it's not. From a budgetary perspective, we'd have to look at that, you know, oftentimes, really simple things that we want to really run forward with could cost us some money, and especially with aged facilities. We just have to think that stuff through, but if we get that kind of feedback and we have a vehicle on how to bring it here, I would suggest that that advisory would be a good place to start with employee recognition programs. They're really simple, any of us can Google an employee recognition program, grab one and say, hey, this is our employee recognition. But if it's not valuable to our employees, if it doesn't speak to them and they haven't helped craft it, have we just done it as a matter of checking the box, or did we do it with good intentions of being meaningful for our staff? So what I'd suggest in this particular case is give me an opportunity to start fleshing that out. I don't want to undermine the department head's authority and how they work with their department, and I don't want to undermine collective bargaining. So these things would be very specific. Campus beautification is another thing that I've had people approach me about as walking around campus. Patrick's done fantastic in developing projects, and we needed them, but I'm of the mind that as he's developing them, that would be a body that we could go to and say, we're considering this project or that project or that project, and what do you think of it? If people have opportunity to have input on how their external world looks, they're going to feel better when they come here. And those are the kinds of things I think we could start there and bring plans back and recommendations here to you, the Board, so you can make decisions on those things.
And one other thing that I've heard my colleagues talk about several times, and this is when you start ratcheting down a little more, especially on Board ones, that we have dates when we believe, when we, excuse me, when you believe something will come back, i.e. a three-year project for facilities, the jail, cannabis dispensaries. Of course, I had to say that, it's a high priority for me. So I think we would like that, and yes, things can change and it might need to be tweaked, but at least it gives us an idea of when that would, we can expect something to happen.
And I appreciate that you bring that up. You've seen that I have listed several times us bringing back plans and dates, and they don't have to be overcomplicated.
No.
But they're, to a certain extent, they're agreement between us as well, not only our commitment that this is a priority of the Board and this is when we will bring it back, but by the same token, it gives us opportunity to... Maybe it's me.
I think it's the whole soundboard, really. Ed and I have been interifying the-
I think it's the CAO.
My magnetic personality.
I think it's Ed. Ed's not here, so we can blame it.
So important in the discussion, and, you know, I obviously see it as my role, as you do as well, to facilitate things getting completed. I committed in the process that I would, in the interview process, that I was here to execute, that we needed to talk about planning, that I had a basis in strategic planning, but we have to execute. Part of our arrangement when we bring back plans and is also our discussion from staff and representing staff here in this seat right now, talking on their behalf, and it also gives us an opportunity to say to you all as a Board and push back slightly and say, I appreciate where you're coming from on wanting us to do a new project, but you've set this as a priority and we're focused, all steam ahead on that priority. For the departments that have to be fully integrated on it, and some of our projects, we can have another parallel-type project that doesn't interact with those same departments, but that gives us the opportunity to, you know, to have discussion about how multiple priorities can overlay and one might push another out. And so I would say from our end of things, having a plan and bringing it forward gives us a way, you know, for lack of a better term, to manage the Board's interests as well, and commit to you that your projects are going to get done in a timely fashion.
Ms. Calloway?
Thank you. One other thing that just kind of popped into my head is multiple handling of paper, paper trails, paper processing. It's almost, and I know the Trackett program will help to bring some of that under control, but when you start to push paper into multiple areas, then getting it back or even getting billing information back or processing information back in a timely manner becomes a real challenge. So hopefully, we can look at how to streamline, does that person really need to have that information, or do we need to have them in that check-off process to make that flow? Or is there a better way for us to flow the whole paper trail? I feel at times that we're bogging ourselves down in nothing more than just putting a piece of paper in front of somebody so they can see it, check it off, and move it on. And whether or not that's valuable, I think is up to your office to decide how to make that work. But I, that's something that I've heard as feedback, is that whether it be accounting or simply paper trails, that there's multiple handling that is bogging and delaying the process.
That came up in the SWOT analysis, and I've heard it, just management by walking around as well, that we've over-engineered some of our processes. In some cases, I think it's because of lack of leadership and lack of process design that we haven't been able to, you know, move things through. It's a natural tendency in organizations when there's been leadership turnover, both at the Board level and the CAO level. I'll say CAO, but this is private industry, public entities. When there's CAO/CEO type turnover, it's natural for organizations to get bunker mentality. And what happens is you end up with fear in the organization, you end up with hoarding of information, and that causes process overreengineering because it has to hit every department to make sure they're in the loop, et cetera. That's really by no fault of our staff, it's just been frankly, survival over time without somebody in the seat having a consistent message. And I think we can- And I think we can fix that, it came through as a, I shouldn't say fix it, I think there's room for improvement. It came through in SWOT analysis, and I've had, fortunately, one of the best things I've done, although I've gained weight from it, the Donut Fridays have been the best thing that I've done, because I've had more people now walk up to me walking across campus and say, you challenged us to give you an idea. Now I'm kind of the sort of walking suggestion box, where people will walk up and say, you know, there's a staying, there's this process. I think if we engage our employees, and I wouldn't suggest that we do it this way, but I'll send you an article that came out from C S A C, Supervisor Callaway may have already seen it, it was one of the C S A C Challenge Awards. Kern was facing a $44 million budget deficit, and they got groups of people in a room to identify process breakdowns, at staff-level folks that handle paper, and they cut processes. I won't go into the whole article, I'll shoot it to you, I'll send it to our department heads as well, but they used Lean Sigma Six process, which I wouldn't suggest that we do, that's again over-engineering something, we have to send people to go get Lean Sigma Six trained, and then we have, well, there you can facilitate, you can train us trainers, but it's a fantastic process, that at least the mentality of being able to look at a process, pull, unwind it, ask about the necessary components of it, and then put it back in place in the most streamlined way. I know we need more staff, I know we're under-resourced, but I firmly believe that we ask staff the work that they do on a daily basis, and we ask them for suggestions on how to fix it, and if we're thoughtful enough to engage that conversation, we'll find out, we can strip out a lot of paper handling, paperwork going across the campus when it doesn't need to. Didn't make it onto my goals initially, but we've purchased electronic systems that will help us with this, but, you know, through our prioritization process, we have been able to get them implemented. And so there's some things sitting out there that will help us solve some of these problems that frankly, I've seen an excitement on behalf of employees to want, to engage in that discussion.
Large industries use a triangle, they display it proudly, it's I S O, Industry Standards Organization 9000 or 9001. I was an auditor in that process, and what's very important is to break the process down, find out where those pieces are, because it has to be repeatable. And that's part of the problem is, is when you add people into that equation, you start to lose that repeatability.
One of the benefits, it's a downstream benefit, not only the process improvement and efficiency, but you redocument what you're actually doing. We don't have, I joked a few times when I came here, where's the manual? And I just hired, he's still in the room, you've met him, John Osborne, our emergency services manager, I told him, the manual's in your office. Well, it's not, we don't have a manual, right? So we just learn through osmosis that here's how certain things are done. When we break a process, when we're going to do process reengineering, then we document the process, and then we have desk reference manuals and opportunities for orientation when new employees come in, and it helps them assimilate in better, and know what they're doing and why they're doing it when we document those things. So that's, it's a downstream positive from doing some redesign on our processes.
All right, so that moves us in to strategic planning.
So we've, I made a distinction earlier on that the board's priorities, for the most part, were on a calendar year. Mine, most likely, in terms of goals, if you give the direction to put those forward, those might extend over either fiscal year or calendar year. They're frankly, they're a little overly broad, they're a little less goalish than they should be, but I felt that was the right starting point. But it kind of initiates the discussion of strategic planning, and I won't go through all of this really quick, but just coming back to the common vocabulary, I'll just go down here, I might use these two terms interchangeably, I'm referring to strategic planning here in this case, but I might inadvertently also say long-term planning. So what is a strategic plan? It's a long-term plan, we decide how long, three, five, 10 years, that guides our organizational development. It is the direction that gives me vehicle to communicate out to not only our employees, but our public and our partners of, you know, where our organization is headed in the long term. You'll see as we go through this, there are really high-level organizational strategies that define essential outcomes in the long term. They give us an opportunity to make sure we tie our resources back to what's important by the board. Invariably, you know, underlying that is, then we don't put resources to things that are unimportant to what our strategic direction is as well. So it helps us, in the long term, manage scarce resources. And ultimately, one of the things you saw in the strengths and weaknesses in the SWOT analysis was communication is lacking, and I take that responsible from the C A O's office. I'll bring forward some recommendations on how I can improve communication, but one of the ways we can, board and through the C A O, to improve communication is to have a strategic plan, and make it available, and something that we're not only engaged with, but the employees can see, and they know why we're doing the work that we're doing, and they have an opportunity in their daily duties to find connection with what the long-term strategy of the organization is. And I touched on the others. So this is something, I made this up on the fly at Leadership Calaveras presentation, but if you look at this example, right now, we have the right people in the boat, we have amazing people wanting to row for us, you heard that in SWOT analysis, we've got great employees. In this particular case, that would be the leader, so at times, we've not had the leader sitting there, setting the tone, and making sure that we have the cadence to keep us going in the right direction. And ultimately, our strategic plan is wherever this boat's headed. If we don't have that plan, we're just rowing, we're rowing for the sake of rowing. And so my suggestion as we move through here, is that we use this as an opportunity to kind of put the bumpers on the direction that the boat's going, and give thought to where we're actually rowing to. So what's the process? We've already started on this a little bit, mission, vision, values. I'm sorry I don't have the date, but I understand there was a retreat at some point where you collaboratively worked on the mission, vision, and values of the organization. That's an important starting point, that effort's already been done, I wouldn't suggest that we redo it unless we find some gaps in it, but I've heard some commitment to the work that was already done, and I certainly don't want to unwind work that's already done. So this came through in the budget documents as well, we're seeing each of the departments, and in fact, you'll see some of them have it at the bottom of, they have their department mission and values listed at the bottom of their emails as well. Next from that, and we'll talk about this here a little bit, is I'll refer to them as strategic focus areas, you might hear that interchangeably with strategic objectives, and then below that level is annual goals and objectives, and ultimately, that leads to accountability throughout the organization. Whether you're flowing up or down, our accountability then ties to our mission, vision, and values, and we know each year, and you know each year what things we're saying as an organization, we're going to do to make sure we fulfill the long-term objective of the county. I hear this a lot whenever I present about strategic planning, that strategic planning is just a private industry thing, it's resource intense, it's processes that, you know, companies like IBM go through, and then they stick it on the shelf and they don't live it. However, and I also hear the, whoa, how do we do this in insert public agency here? This can be school district, community college district, city, county. How do we as public entities focus on strategic planning when every two years there's an election, and our organization invariably changes? I'm going to show you some examples, but I would submit that the 90-plus, maybe 95% of the work that we do on a day-to-day basis occurs regardless of the board and the board's policy perspectives. We do what we do every day, knowing what work operationally needs to be done, regardless of who sits on the dais. And when we have an election, there's policy changes certainly, and the will of the board changes, but the stronger we are in pointing our boat, so to speak, rowing in the right direction, the more we'll be able to plan from an employee perspective on how we keep the county going that direction, regardless of policy changes that come in with board elections. And there's some examples that we're going to go through, that evidence that this can be done in public entities. I want to touch really well on Mono Counties, now that you, don't turn and look at this too fast, you'll get dizzy on this wheel here, but there's a pretty good example of some work we've already done, right? We already talked about mission, vision, values, we've done this work. And by the way, I'm not suggesting that we do any particular thing I show you here, in terms of the graphics or words, I'm just trying to illustrate the processes and how it can work for us from other public entities. Mono County's not a particularly big county with a huge budget, so it was a good example. So there's a lot wrapped in here, they have the mission, vision, values that support their strategic focus areas, and then they move off on that. In their plan, you can see here what they call core services, they define core services, that's the 90-plus percent work we do on a daily basis just to run the organization. This gets a little busy for me, but it was, it was good to show how everything ties together from high-level, mission, vision, values, to strategic focus, to their particular areas, and then what they're doing in each of those particular areas. They use each of their strategic focus areas, you can see this is, they call it strategic priorities here, but in this case, I would call them annual goals with, there's probably some underlying objectives of how they're going to complete these, but these strategic focus areas are the ones that are going to be long-term. This is where they're heading and where they're staying focused, or in our case, where we're rowing that boat. The underlying goals are what they're going to do to make sure that boat keeps going in the same direction. So as you see, as you start drilling down in their plan, it all ties back to, they have a long-term vision, they have strategic focus areas, and then they have an annual plan of work that underlies that, so that they can show accountability on what they're doing each year to make sure they're moving the county forward. This is, happens to be a city, but this is just, it's not as graphic, it's not as colorful, maybe not as busy. I tend to gravitate to more simple things like this, but you can see strategic focus areas, these are the goals of this, in this case, city of El Segundo, and then under each of those goals, they'll have, they do have annual objectives of things they're going to do every year that push them towards these particular goals. This happens to be a county that's not far away, it's Sutter County, they have a much bigger budget than us, but a lot of the same influences and being rural, they just set priorities. Now they're, you can see the mishmash of terms starts to get complicated, at the end of the day, it doesn't matter the terms that we have, we have to have mission, vision, values, we have to have some focus areas, and then goals and objectives under those, so that we go from very broad down to annual plans of work and annual reporting on what we've completed. In this case, they call them priorities, but these are the things that they're working on, their board adopted these in 2018, these are their priorities, and if you dig down a little farther, as an example, in homelessness, they have particular work that they're doing. Under their Sutter Point-specific plan, they have particular work on particular timelines that will be done to fulfill that priority. This, as a side note, I didn't realize that Mariposa was the mother of all counties, but apparently they are, based on their logo there. The mother of all counties has chosen to do, and they actually have a really nice plan, and they're...
You actually cut that part off on our... Mother of county, I don't know if you strategically did that or not, the logo, but it's missing on our...
On the printed piece? Yes, right here.
Oh yeah, mother of counties, it's not up in the corner like that.
So we learned something new, they are the mother of all counties, so that means our long-term goal will be not to be the mother of all counties, but apparently the father of all counties, or queen of all counties. So they actually have a great plan though, I'm being facetious about their logo, I apologize to my friends in Mariposa, but they have a great plan. Their focus areas are really clear, I mean, these are broad, so they're long-term, these are the areas that they're going to focus on, and as you move through their plan, under each one of these, I just happened to grab Prosperity, under each one of these, they have particular objectives, and this is the work that we're going to do, and the timeline that it's going to take to do it, and then they have a scorecard type of concept that they're bringing back, you know, this is what the board said our focus areas are, this is the work we said we were going to do, and on particular timeframes, we're evidencing to the board that we're getting the work done that you've asked us to do. And then I touched on this already, I just wanted to come back and show the annual priorities under, in Mono County's case. What I tried to do is pull a breadth of cities and/or counties that have really broad budgets, and in Mono County's case, and Mariposa, they're not particularly rolling in riches, I mean, they're resource-challenged like we are, and have some of the same demographics and whatnot, so I tried to evidence at least very similar counties. I didn't do, you know, I didn't pull every county and try to see what our comparisons would be like, I'm just trying to be illustrative of ways we can do this work. So where do we proceed from here? Well, as I mentioned, we've done mission, vision, values, while I marked it completed, we've done the work, but I had some questions in the budget process, that did we really ever adopt that? Is it actually completed? That's a question that needs to be answered, but right now, I can tell you, there are written documents that say our mission, vision, values, and they had fairly broad input, you know better than I because you were involved in the processes. So some things to ask here is, you know, would we do a study session to talk more deeply about strategic planning? Frankly, it's not something that you do in a vacuum, if you look at any one of these plans, they took multiple years to develop. It's not something we can, that I can just sit down and write, or the board can just sit down and write, there are some things that you really need to think about in the process, is what's the cost? Are we going to have a facilitated plan, or are we going to have it internally driven? And it, you know, one way or another, we have to decide how much of a priority it is. If we're going to take this on, and we're going to have it facilitated, and we're going to pay money, certainly that taps into our scarce resources, but by the same token, it also moves it through the process in a little bit different way. So it might expedite it if we felt we had the need to get a plan in place so we could start rowing in a particular direction together, or internally driven means it's probably going to be elongated, and it's going to overlap with your other priorities and my goals, and so we just have to emphasize where we want it to fit in that. Most of them have a planning and/or development group, and so I know how we do it in higher education, we go out to the constituent groups, and they appoint people, and that's your committee. In cities, county, and cities and counties, it's not as clean-cut, so we have to decide how we would, if we were going to move something like this forward, what would be our group that would work on it? Is it just the board, is it the board plus? And then what forums would we have? Forums for interaction with the plan. Community involvement is a big one, I can give you examples, Napa County as an example, had very broad public input. They sent out surveys in multiple instances out to their public, they listed it on their website where you could fill the survey out. There's all kinds of questions about, did somebody fill it out five or eight or 10 times? I'm not going to talk about the quality of the data, but the point is, is they're an example of using a survey to do it. One other county that I reviewed did forums where board members were given facilitated documents, documents to facilitate their own forums in their own district, where you go out and have public interaction, and you hear the public's interest on what the focus areas would be. And then each of them use different ways to engage with the employees. I'll come back to this, you know this is a theme for me, I interviewed to it, I've talked to it in the first 90 days that I've been here. Our employees are our most valuable and amazing resource. My suggestion would be, and many of the examples have different ways of employees interacting with helping guide the strategic focus areas as well. They know the work better than we do on a day-to-day basis, and we invite them into this discussion, they're going to give us input that we could have never necessarily dreamed in. Now, many of our employees are residents as well, so they've had, they'd have vehicles to engage as a citizen, but I would recommend that we create engagement for all of our employees in some way, but that would be certainly a board decision on how we move forward, and if and how employees are engaged. And then what's the board's participation? Do we have a series of study sessions, or do we have another retreat? You know, it's done many ways, and I know this is getting, you know, ambiguous, if you ask me for a particular plan, I could tell you my own idea, but at some point, we have to have a way of gathering the information from whomever we gather it from, public, internal, our partners out in the public world, private sector, and bringing it to the table, and theming it out in such a way that you can make sense of it in terms of setting the strategic focus, whether there's five areas, or three, or two, and what the long-term approach is going to be. But at the end of the day, that has to happen. But at the end of the day, that, that has to happen. I can't go out, gather all this information, and bring it back to you and recommend a plan to you. If we do, it's destined to be a plan on the shelf. Um, you, you, we have to thoughtfully engage in the process and, and, uh, really own it and be connected to it, so that our employees know that it really is a long-term approach and direction that we're going to take, uh, for the county. And then it's good to know what the timeline for implementation is. Most of the plans are phased in in some way. I'll make this up, but year one is the data gathering, year two is setting of strategic focus areas, year three is the implementation of starting annual goals and becoming accountable to the plan. That can be expedited, uh, but you can't just say, go write a plan and bring it back to us next month, and we'll adopt it, and then we'll start implementing that. Uh, they, frankly, the, a strategic plan or a long-term plan just doesn't work that way. So at the end of the day, if we have a multi-year phase-in of this plan, if we decide to undertake this, I, I want us to go in eyes wide open, that it's also going to then overlay with other priorities. Um, I would suggest that at the end of the day, this, this eliminates a lot of that work, because it sets the priorities for, for many years, and then each year, we're just setting annual goals underneath that. Um, but the tough part is operating the way we are on annual goals, and then getting to a long-term plan all at the same time, because it requires a lot of work.
Here's a question.
I have something to add to the list. The census will be done, or they'll be doing the census for the 2020, so we're going to have to have a process for how we want to look at the impact and whether on redistricting in Calaveras, I mean, there's many permutations for doing it. I just think we should look at some options that best fit Calaveras.
Yeah, that certainly would impact our decision-making. We, we know that redistricting lines will, will change, so if we moved forward with, like, the notion of each district supervisor having forums with their constituents, their constituents might change, um, with redistricting. I wouldn't suggest that be a way that we go about doing it. There are counties that have done it. What I can tell you is there's a lot of room for individual influence, so where those have been done, it's very scripted, um, the interactions that you have, have, and my advice would be very free-flow that come back in, you almost need a recorder there to, to take in the, the public data, uh, but that, that would influence it, that, you know, what's the integrity of the data if, if any one of you goes out to your district and has those kind of interactions and the forums, and then the next year, the district changes.
Well, I mean, it can, because there's rules regarding tax rate areas and geography and so forth that have to do with it. I'm looking at what process the board wants to, so when it's time, you know, do we put a committee together, and does the committee make the decision? And so it takes it away from local chair mentoring, or, so, I mean, it's just something that'll be coming up next year, that I think we should at least look at the options as a board on how we want to process that.
So, Al, I want to, have, are we wanting to try and answer some of these questions? Sorry.
Susan? Do we want to try to answer some of these questions now, or how do you want to formulate this sort of next step?
For, for this-
What do you need, uh, what do we need to accomplish?
Well, two, two things. Going back to the first piece, some discussion of whether or not the board endorses the go, the goals that I'm doc, uh, have documented, and expect me to bring plans back on those. On this, really, it was more a, a discussion item. Here's the information. We don't need action on this in particular, other than if we want to start moving this forward process, this process forward, is that in the interest of the board? It's, it's certainly my suggestion, and you knew that I would probably come back with this at some time, because I touched on it a lot in the interview process, but it's really the prerogative of the board, um, to decide whether we're going to move this forward, whether now's the right time, maybe we set it for, if there's interest of the board, maybe not in this current year, but that we start the process in the next fiscal year, because if there's any resource, resources needed for it, we could budget for it. This isn't an immediate need. Uh, it's important, and, and I think it's really key, um, not only for the interest that you expressed to me in the process, but for me, having said I want to be here long-term, this gives me a way, and all of us that intend to be here for a long time doing the work of the county, a way to make sure that we stay focused, doing valuable work for the public, even when there's policy shifts. So, we don't need to do that today. We, it can be as easy as, why don't you bring some suggestions back in another study session? Um, or it can be, let's just put it off this year, our plate's really full, we want to do it, we're interested, let's put it off into the next year and fit it into our goals for the next year, and it could just be one of my goals to, in, in, uh, in next, uh, fiscal year to, to put some recommendations forward.
Okay. Um, just my two bits. I, I understand you've got to work on the fiscal year, and we all budget on the fiscal year, but, you know, chairmanships and elections lead us to think in annual, uh, s- cycle. So, that's inherent to the conflict. So we've got to approve your goals, see if these are the goals that we want you to try to come up with, and then you will come back to us with actual action items under them, um, strategies.
Correct.
Tactics.
Correct.
So the goals, um, are outlined under accountability, facilities, employment, engagement, revenue, fiscal stability, and policy. Five broad goals that Al would then come back to us with tactics on how he's going to accomplish those. Mr. President, what else?
Wow. That's, that's a heavy lift. Uh, are we sure that we want to try to pick off all of those in one shot, or, or do we want to focus on one or two of them as being more of a priority? Uh, because I look at policy, those, that's a big one.
That, that's probably the biggest one that we could be flexible on. Frankly, um, this is overarching. It's a goal that'll perpetuate every one of these. And, and I'll say again, accountability's not a good goal. I put it in there because I think it's really important that we have the discussion, um, and we have. So that will be overarching for all of these. Revenue and fiscal stability, we have to have some of those discussions by function anyways, and it was one of your, uh, our priorities, facilities, same thing. So really, the two I think that are most flexible are right here, strategic planning and policy. Policy, frankly, if we're going to look at, with the exception of, um, personnel policies or, uh, pay policies, things that we have talked about that are discrete things, I, I think we should still move those forward, and the human resources goals that are being developed in my department, but a full policy review, I think frankly, would have to be outsourced, and we bring somebody in, and that's, that's a next-year kind of thing. It's really important, we need to have it done, but it's probably going to take a commitment of, of dollars in next year's budget for us to have a review of what's missing in our policies, a rewrite, and thus, us having a, a, a review process on how it gets moved through, uh, the board. So that one, we could move out. It was an important one, though, because it came up in SWAT, and it was tied to yours. This is one I wouldn't want to sacrifice, um, employee engagement. I think it's an important thing, uh, but, but these two here, we could, we can move around.
Yeah. Al, the, the fiscal year versus annual year, I think what you're looking at here in all of these during that, that meeting that we held in January, that was a study session for study sessions.
Right.
And these were our priorities on how we were going to tackle each study session, and, and what dates we were looking at. Um, I don't see on here, though, that was up here, the general plan. And accolades to Peter for getting it to where it is now. We're going to be dealing with that later on in July. However, tied to the general plan, just, just when we adopt it at that time, it's not over. Um, there's a lot of work that needs to be done going afterwards, including Title 17, that's going to have to be coming back to us, and that's going to be coming back sometime, Peter, next year, um, maybe later in the year, that we have to deal with in, in order to realign all of Title 17 to our general plan. So that needs to be somewhere in here, um, as our priorities. And, you know, I'm, I'm in favor, anyway, that's why you're looking at a, an annual year, and I'm in agreement with Jack on, on the fact that it, you have a new, new, uh, elections coming up, you know, every two years, you have a new board chairman coming up, uh, maybe some priorities may change, but these in January were our priorities on the study sessions we bring forward, that we could go over and, and tell you where we would like to go from there to bring something back to us. Uh, so, but, uh, employee engagement, I'm absolutely agree with you one hundred percent on that. And the rest of them, I'm, that's fine with me, if you want to work on it and bring something back to us. The strategic planning, even if you look at, um, the mother of counties, Mariposa, their, their planning and their goals that they show were no more than three years. A couple of them were twelve to twenty-four months, and a couple of them were twenty-four to thirty-six months. And I think if you start going in government, just being in it for as long as I have, um, if you start going forward past that, I, I'm not sure you're going to end up in five years exactly what you started at five years before that, um, because of, again, turnover, which pointed out in the election, or different things that come up, uh, that the board gives different direction on, so.
Well, I should have covered that in the presentation. You bring up a, a really valid point in the planning process. For one, they're never static. It's always a living document. It's the general direction, and that's where we'll be headed, but there's always some pieces of accountability review, like an annual report, or a scorecard, or whatever, and there's always a relook at, are all the conditions still valid, valid that, that gave us our strategic focus? In some of those, if you look, if it was public safety, or prosperity, or whatnot, in general, those are things, they're philosophical things that regardless of what your political aisle, side of the aisle you're on, or in general, that can live over time, and it's usually the policy. And I agree with you, by the way, the direction may change a little bit, but at least it gets us going, um, you know, longer term. Those pieces that I broke down, um, if you drill down in their plans, some are longer, uh, and they just, they talk about, you know, a five, five-year review, but my recommendation would always be that we have annual goals that are tying to the strategic focuses, whether it's three years or five years, that we, we each year have some discussion, whether it's January, or, I really don't care if it's fiscal year or annual year, we can list them out by month, it's, it's fine. I'm not particular about it, other than sometimes it requires resources, and we might say it's a priority in the current year, but we have to budget for it, which doesn't come up until, um, and, until, uh, end of June. That's the only distinction that's necessary, sometimes the priorities take resources.
And I'm going to agree with you, but you start going past three years, those five years, those things are going to be coming back and being changed, and maybe the direction in a different way, so, um-
Yeah, I agree.
I think the shorter time period, three years, we could actually do some five years, but, but they're, in mind that they're going to may, maybe changing as we get closer to those goals.
Yeah.
I want to touch a little bit about the old jail, which, um, seems to be, um, something that's been around as long as the general plan update, um, and the jail's still there. We have a meeting coming up next week-
Correct.
-with our committee, and at that time, I expect to, um, put together a timeline with a critical path, and, and hold accountability to that, to get that accomplished and done. I think Patrick, with his background in construction, um, certainly knows what I talk about, putting together a schedule and critical paths to get to where we need to get. So we'll be discussing that and putting something together with that. Uh, the mechanical units, um, I, I'm in agreement with you. At some point, nothing lasts forever. Uh, we need to look at, at what we're going to do. Certainly, an inspection needs to be done, brought up by Supervisor Mills about the pipes, their cells, whether they can last with pressure, or they're going to blow, or we're going to have a problem with them. Um, and a larger problem by just changing them out and not doing anything with the piping system. Some building pipeline explodes in the ceiling, and we have major problems. That needs to be dealt with, much like anything else, that, um, you do regular maintenance too, and at the end of its life, you have to have a plan to replace it. Again, employee recognition, I'm in favor of, and, um, Title 17, that has to be part of our plan here, immediate plan, so.
Mr. President, stop.
I, yeah, whether it be, uh, employee engagement, employee empowerment, um, it's, you know, uh, they're, they're the ones on the ground, they, they know a lot of the functions better than any one of us, none of us are expert in every field, so, uh, getting, getting, uh, their input is crucial in finding the best way or course for the county in moving forward. Accountability, I'm going to keep going back to that, and revenue and fiscal stability are high on my list. This, uh, revenue and fiscal stability, we just went over our budget, you know, we can talk-
Sorry.
We can talk about, uh, you know, what, setting goals for, in another year, but we talk about leaning that on, uh, putting on a new budget, and if we don't have new revenues coming in, then we're going to have to cut somewhere else. In my opinion, the way I see it at this point, you know, things are, things are fluid. We sat down and we did have two cannabis discussions this year for a study session. We, uh, a majority of the board did vote as, to move forward on working on that, uh, and I think that, at that point, beyond the study session being set there, was set as a priority to move forward on. And, and I wa, I want to bring that back to everyone's attention, that it, there was a timeline talked about during the, uh, April sixteenth meeting, that, that it would be back before us by August. Now, not every, you know, we can be optimistic about timeline, timelines when that's brought up, but, uh, I, I would like to see the progress start working towards, towards that, those ends, and, um, I don't want to delve too much into specifics, so, um, I, I think that's, uh, that was right on the list, in my opinion, right after the general plan, and I do appreciate the work that's been done on the general plan, and I do appreciate it's coming back before us. I think we have more work to do on that. I think it's going to take us more than the two days we set aside. We may want to discuss with the board whether pulling, whether we want to take three days that week for it, and if it doesn't go three days, then we can, uh, look at the option of, uh, just taking the third day off, you know? But I think, I think we're going to need more than two days to work on this. I think it's going to be, uh, very contentious possibly, and there's going to be a lot of public input, and I think that just the public input's going to probably take at least one day for us. So, the, I, I think the general plan, we need, you know, I would pull the board on that, I would pull the board on, uh, expediting the process to work on cultivation and o- other aspects of that, um, as part of our priorities.
If, okay, I think what we want to start with is the goals, right? And then those are-
Right, our goals.
Those are actually going to be the priorities, would be our tactics. Am I correct? I'm trying to figure out how to get you what you need out of this, and then we've obviously got a lot of things to discuss as far as specific pieces, so, Al, help me make sure I'm giving you what you need from this.
I think my takeaway is right now are the, the, the goals with maybe the exception of strategic planning, that we can bring that back and talk about it, maybe move policy out. So the goals would be accountability, revenue, fiscal stability, facilities, employee engagement, and under both accountability and revenue and fiscal stability, bringing back the priority or objective with a timeline, uh, for the corresponding priorities from the board.
Is that-
Is that, and that goes for all, all of the priorities, so facilities, as an example, we talked about-
So we say facilities, we'd say by December, this, cannabis by August, this will happen, and then we'll, okay, does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Is it, is it, is, is, is there a consensus generally on what Al's talking about as far as his broad goals, and then he'll come back with specifics?
Yeah, I, I, I'm in agreement that the, the broad goals are, are, uh, I think, a good outline for the county as a whole, and I think that's great for a strategic plan, and then, you know, deeper in- And then, you know, deeper into where our goals are, will, will be outlined deeper into the strategic plan with, with possible dates and everything else as we progress.
But to Supervisor Stoppa's point, we do need to, we come up with a policy or a direction, we're going to have to shortly thereafter stick a date to it, so we can track on things.
Yeah. And with the understanding, it's like sometimes dates can't be upheld. Sometimes there's things outside our influence that, that will change that date. But, you know, that, that's, that's a pretty stark line in the sand, you know? Sometimes it's going to be blown, blown away, but we, we definitely need to start doing that because that, that falls into the accountability category. And the point where it's like, look, if we can't get the work done, then we're going to find, have to find out how we're going to get the work done.
In, in general, and Supervisor Toffinelli said this, every project, every project has a critical path. Every project has risks. I'll use, you know, I'll use the old jail as an example. We could get a weather delay. We could get, you know, an, an environmental issue. So, every project has very distinct things that we need to do to complete and milestones, and then they have potential for slip. And it's our obligation to be able, as best we can in a project, identify where those areas of slip are. All of the projects have to come to the board. So, we know our board deadlines, we know our board's schedule and, you know, one of the ways that we can address schedules and moving them in and moving them out, and you've mentioned here on a variety of things, we could have a special meeting. So, there's ways we can bring every schedule in and out, as long as we're putting some, at least initial timelines together. I'm not talking generally, on any project, we can identify, this needs to be done before this gets done and that gets done, and then it has to go through a body for a decision. That, that part, if you take the issue out of it, we can do that with virtually anything. I mean, if, if you want to make it unemotional, baking cookies, right? We have to turn the oven on, period. It has to be on before you can bake. We can put those steps in, in every project. And I think it's fair for us to know what the steps are on our end before we daylight them and put dates with them. And then we can talk about how we, how we press them in and out. Every project has an accordion in it. And, and if we just look at it that way, regardless of what the issue is, then we might, might need to build in slip for, like you talked about, whether or not, you know, public input's going to take three days or none at all on some issues. There may be no public input at all, which may mean that particular project moves forward quickly.
So, if we fall off the critical path, there could be costs associated with that and also maybe a need to change priorities. I, you know, I have another contractor sitting beside us here, he understands liquidated damages. And we oftentimes don't think about that in government service, that there is a cost associated with delays. And so, when we set a critical path, we also have to understand what those costs could be if we don't meet those goals.
Al, we could start digging down and as we started a little bit here with some of Supervisor Stoppa's about getting to some of the tactics. Is that useful to you at this point? Is that a conversation?
Oh, I think that's a prerogative of the board for me. I have what I need and what our intention was in terms of laying out, setting my goals and, you know, moving forward from here. I, I think I can articulate what the board's direction is.
Let me ask the first question, since we're just talking about timelines. And when will we see the, the rest of this fleshed out?
Well, I mentioned some dates, whether or not you want to see them on study sessions or in the alternative, what I can do is bring back to the board, just under each goal, some particular ideas that, that I have for projects. I mean, there's, there will be some things that I'll ask you to endorse as a particular project under some of these, like facilities, for example. If we're talking about mechanical systems and I need to bring that back, I, I can list it as mechanical systems and when it'll come back and for review. And if you authorize me to move forward, then I can put a plan date with it. So, some of them will require that I drill down into the particular projects under this and, and how you want to see that, whether you want to see it in a study session or just, just an information item where we do 20 minutes on, here's what the goal was, here's some objectives underneath, and do you support the objectives? Should we move them forward? I can do that.
Okay.
Supervisor Stoppa? I, I just want to make sure that when we're talking about facilities, we're not just talking mechanical units. We've got remodeling to do overall. So, every project, when you bring back, you're going to bring it back outlined that we've, that we've, over the years, the board has agreed to do, so.
There's, there's two particular things here. One is a master plan and one is facilities. The master plan's a larger project. I'm not necessarily suggesting that in the immediacy, but us bringing back specific projects under facilities. And those, some of those you've already identified, some of those I might bring back in addition to that. And so, you'll be able to see those discrete pieces. For those, the best place to bring that may be the ad hoc committee, because that's the purpose of the ad hoc committee. Except for anything new, I might recommend, like, like the mechanical systems we hadn't contemplated for the ad hoc committee.
Supervisor Stoppa? Chair, I believe that, I'm hearing you say that you really don't want to delve, delve into the specifics right now, that you have enough information to take forward from here and then you can develop an action plan based upon what we've given you today.
They're so broad, I don't, you know, if you endorse the broad goals, then I think your expectation is to bring back the objectives and some timelines with that. In some cases, you might not necessarily agree with the objectives. So, I don't want to just rush into this and go do my own work under each of these. I'd like to bring them back here for, for at least review, if, even if it's just a 20-minute informational item, here's the things underneath each of these that I see as objectives for this year. And if you support them, I'll move forward and put a timeline together and bring that back.
Within the context of the broad policies, I agree. I think that would be the smartest way to do this, rather than dig into some specifics right now and tilt the whole discussion.
Yeah, you have to get into specifics when he brings it back. I mean, specifically go through each one, specifically for facilities, specifically for revenues, when that comes to us.
Supervisor Stoppa?
I think, I think, I think for quite a few of those things, very broad, but I think we have taken course on some of the issues. And I think that it would be prudent to push possible deadline dates on a few small issues that we're already given a consensus of the board to move forward on. You know, for, for the most part, I agree, agree with my fellow supervisors to the right and left of me, but I think there's a few other issues that we need to start, we need to discuss today that are board priorities and we need to put a date on them so that, you know, not that they aren't going to be done by that date, but irregardless, I want to put a date out there so that we can have that there for, for our next goal and how we want to move forward. Because I've said it for years now, we're not a one-issue county. We need to get multiple issues done at one time. And I, I would like to start seeing the more than one thing get done at a time. Not that they aren't, but.
Just for clarification's sake, I think we were talking, the, what we were, Supervisor Toffinelli and Mills were suggesting that we were just talking about the objectives under my goals. But those wouldn't undermine anything that's already been decided in the January, that we're moving forward with the board priorities. I haven't suggested changing any of those or moving any of those. I tried to align my goals with, you know, these things on this side, with what you had on this side, and, and put them all in there in about the same timeline that, that you discussed them in January. So, anything that I took from our conversation was just with regard to my goals and putting clarity under those, and then all the other priorities continue to be in place.
So, unless there's further questions from the board, we will open this up for public comment. Public comment, if you can, obviously get up, let me know you're coming and line up at the door, no more than five, and at biggest 30 minutes. Bonnie, you're first.
Thank you, Mr. Alt, for having such a positive projection, but I'm here to be the devil's advocate. Few years ago, during budget hearings, the CAO advised the board supervisors that they weren't God almighty, either individually or collectively. And she was soon gone. It seems if you dare, you dare to criticize or reprimand or suggest to the board of supervisors, you can be eliminated. And this brings me back to my little spiel about cats in a sandbox. If you're willing to cover up for other people, you're here for eternity. And I'm talking now about public engagement. And you brought up something that I had written down, which was a suggestion box. But that suggestion box should come with no retaliation or no punitive actions, and not only for employees, but also for the public. Because we've seen members of this board of supervisors challenge, yell, and disparage members of the public when they have something to say. And it's been very disheartening. And lastly, you mentioned that we have the best people working for the county. Well, we don't. If there's a department that has hired somebody that there's been only one application received, you don't have the best applicant, you have the only applicant. And we've seen a circling of the, of the wagons where we protect people's incompetence because of loyalties or nepotism or something of the sort. And I think the accountability and the semi-annual review is exceptional, but it needs to be done in depth and it needs to be done with an attitude of, well, maybe we made a mistake. Maybe now it's time to rectify that mistake. And not to be ashamed that we made a mistake, but we may have been acting out of a lack of information or maybe a loyalty to someone. Anyway, that's my spoilers for this, because I think it's exceptional planning that's gone into this. And I can see the real benefit of having a, a process or a scheduling for all of the things that need to be done. And as far as accountability, thank you, Marita. Elections are not the only accountability needed for the board of supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bonnie. Vicky?
I too just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. I come here as a citizen, looking at how does this affect us and, you know, how does it help us? And obviously, it would be very helpful when you're talking about setting priorities, having dates, so that the public can also watch that. And also be able to come back to the board and say, well, you guys talked about this. Or when we get a surprise of something else is on the board or on the agenda that was never discussed before, we can find out, you know, why did that happen? I thought we were now working towards putting things down on paper first and talking about it. So, anyway, I think that's going to be helpful, so I want to thank you for that. I know it's not easy, because we see that things change daily in a county and people bring up different issues. The other thing I wanted to also remind you of, that Supervisor Toffinelli, and that's the general plan, you know, I know it's not up there, but I know it must be in your list, but that is like the number one thing, I know. And they also made a commitment that until that general plan is completed, you know, we wouldn't move forward with any other major policies. So, anyway, that was all and thank you.
Ms. Corda?
I'm interested in trust and, and the perception of the public for trust with the board of supervisors and the county employees. For instance, the Planning Commission had a meeting, this last Planning Commission meeting, and they had three items on the agenda. Well, I was looking on the county sites, I have several different things to try to get the information, like when the meetings are or what's on the agenda. And I couldn't find the agenda. And I couldn't find the agenda for today's meeting either, last night. And it's a perception of trust, because, you know, for a public to want to come up and input, you don't necessarily want to come up to every meeting, but if you don't want to miss something that you think's important, then you have to come to every meeting, because the website does not show what's happening. And, and you have to have the agenda to be able to figure out what's going to happen. And I, I don't understand doing that, what they were doing with the Planning Commission, trying to rezone things to make it easier for people to grow cannabis. And, you know, change the, there were three different zonings. And I just don't, I don't trust government. I believe that people do what they do so that they can get away with it. And that's my perception and I'm sticking to it.
Vicky?
Well, I watched the last Planning Commission meeting and I watched the, the applicant who was looking for a rezone discuss his, he discussed his, his goals for grazing. And then people, people inferred that that wasn't really his goal. And so, I think that it's really important for people to get a fair hearing and especially as we look into, you know, people wanting to rezone their properties and things and spending a tremendous amount of money on these rezones.
We're talking about this topic.
Okay. I would like for there to be accountability as well. I think that it's important that we stick to a plan that was set out earlier in the year about various issues coming in. And I do think it's important that, that we not single out certain groups of people for, as, as cash cows. It seems like there are certain policies put into place to charge fees, to pay for staff, and that makes me very uncomfortable. I think that our policies should be set in a way that are fair to all citizens. How's that? Thank you.
Tom?
Yeah, I wasn't planning to speak, but on accountability, part of accountability I see as transparency and part of, I can't remember the other, when you were using the Calabama Calatopia metaphors, there was something about people saying, oh, that's just Calaveras County. And there's a lot of truth to that. There's a lot of mistrust on all sides of all issues between the public and the county government here. For example, there's the Mincher Harnish General Plan Draft that has never been released. And you spent just about a million of our dollars producing this document. And it seems appropriate to me that the people who paid for it ought to be at least able to see what we paid for, even though it's not the plan being used. Similarly, as a person who paid a good sum of money toward the NEXUS study on cannabis registration fees, I would like to see that. Yeah, I know the law allows you to not disclose a working draft document. What the law allows and what is appropriate are not necessarily aligned. I would like to see what you're doing with my money. And the fact that you don't want me to causes concern. And so, part of bettering accountability and besides just the relationship between employees and department heads and the board, is the, really, the relationship and perceptions between the board and the government and the public. And I would like to see everybody in this county government make an attempt to mend those bridges that have been broken. That's all. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further public comment, we will bring it back to the board. Thank you very much, Mr. All. I sincerely appreciate it. If there are no further comments from the board, we will go back to the final item on the agenda. Thank you very much.
Supervisor announcements. In compliance with AB 1234, chaptered as Government Code Section 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on meetings they attended at the expense of the local agency at the next regular meeting of the legislative body. This report is required to include meetings attended for which there has been expense reimbursement, such as mileage, meals, lodging, et cetera, but may also, at the board member's discretion, include any other meeting attended by the supervisor on behalf of the county.
Who would like to begin?
I will.
Oh, Marita wants to go first.
No, I have Central Sierra Child Support Meeting on Monday.
Supervisor Mills?
We'll go down the line. Last Wednesday, CCWD and Jeff Meyer, their chief financial officers, retiring. It's end of this month, they'll be gone. It was interesting, the conversations surrounding fuel with the public power safety shut-off, that that, it isn't so much the generators, it's being sure you got enough fuel. Interesting, too, is Thursday, Murphy's Sanitary District, same conversation about fuel, and how do they support generators? And Copper Fire that evening, same thing, fuel. So, there seems to be a common thread here, about are we able to support our infrastructure in these public power safety shut-offs? Friday, I was at the Tractor Supply Grand Opening in Angels Camp, and they had a really good turnout there. I look forward to their being involved in the community, and how they can be of benefit. Then Monday, last night, was LAFCO. I'll be up at the Tri-Dam meeting tomorrow, Thursday morning, at 9:00 a.m., because they're going to have on their discussion a possible action to affirm the Lake Tullock permitting process and application variance procedures, so I'll be there for that. Utica has a new general manager, Utica Water Empower, in case anybody wants to know about that one. Might be one that we can reach out and just get to know who they are. And I'm arranging a tour of the spillway at New Maloney's through the Bureau of Reclamation and the Army Corps, and Congressman Staff is assisting with that. And I would certainly appreciate the C.O. and other people who are elected officials in interested parties to assure the public that this is not an Oroville situation. This is, the people in Lake Tullock area and Copperopolis are indeed safe, and they're willing to provide us with their study, so we can include that in our OES Emergency Action Plan, so that we have all of that information together, and more than willing to cooperate in every way possible. I will tell you, they've done a great job in controlling the level at the lake in New Maloney's. Despite two times the normal rainfall and snowpack, they still kept it from spilling, which is spectacular, and I think a very great benefit to the city of Oakdale and Riverbank and Tracy, who didn't have to face the flooding that happened on the Tooluma River years ago in the Modesto area, strictly because they had to release the water. So, great job for them, and appreciate very much having that dam in place. That's all I have.
Should I stop her? I know you had a question about general plan deals, too.
Yeah, I got multiple things. So, I'm going to start out with, I went to the Molo Job Training Committee meeting yesterday. They're moving forward on multiple good things. They recently received a grant for a prison-to-work initiative. They got, I think, I believe, $1.3 million. If it was an equal share across all the counties in California, that would have only been $300,000, but they thought outside the box, and they are putting together a pilot program. So, they got more money than, let's say, Los Angeles and San Francisco did either of them, and on the fact of what they presented for this grant. And at one point in the future, I would like the opportunity for them to come forward and possibly do a short presentation to our board on what they're doing. And this goes for the prisons and the jails, so that when people get out of jail, they're on their way to getting incorporated into the workforce. And they aren't just out with the opportunity to, it's part rehabilitation. So, they'll be working with probation and everyone else. So, they've already reached out to everyone. So, possible in the future, I mean, I could pull that at a later date. I'm not going to pull about that today, I just want to bring that to everyone's attention. I think we do need to possibly set another day for the final week of this month aside. I want to see how the rest of our board feels about, you know, just having that in our back pocket for the general plan. We know it's a big issue, and we, if we, if it comes down to it, I'm more than willing to put in three days of work right in a row to work forward on it, and hopefully mitigate some of the concerns that are still out there, and come to some positive conclusions.
Let me, if you want to stop, we could delve into that right now, if you want.
Yeah, no, I will, we do need a piece, Mill, I'll piece.
You know, one of the, one of the things, okay, so the question is, the poll is, want to add another day?
Yeah.
In my experience, three days in a row is going to fry everybody, so I think we ought to probably break it up just a little bit. If we can't get it done in two, if we need to find a third date, we could put a hold on that. Is that what you're proposing, more or less?
Possibly, yeah. I mean, I'm open to different suggestions.
That's really tough, now.
That's possible. I'd rather do the three days in a row myself.
That's my first.
I'll be gone August 4th through 11th, so I won't be available during those days.
I'm not available August 1st.
Okay.
So, the 31st is the day three?
We could go to 29th.
No, August 30th and 31st right now. 30th is Tuesday, Wednesday's the 31st, Thursday's the 1st, Friday's the 2nd.
Right now, we have plans on 30th and 31st.
So, do you want to go, are you supposing three in a row, or break it up?
Well, I'd rather go three in a row and get it done, but like I'm saying, I won't be available for the next week.
Right.
And so...
So, we bump it out either...
You'd have to bump it out after.
Or we could conceivably do it on the 29th. I don't know. Supervisor Mills, what's your thoughts on this?
If we want to do it on the 29th, let's start on a Monday, and do Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, that's fine. But I agree, I think that... That might bring you back, Peter.
I'd agree with Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Peter, did you run?
I quit doing Monday morning until...
But, yeah, three days in a row, I would just assume that we work it, work through it. Our Planning Commission's, not only the one that's here currently, but the one that was here before, that have done just a monumental amount of work and a monumental amount of time on this, and I think we need to be respectful of their work, and be sure that we have a full and complete conversation, too.
And one of the, one of the things we could, if we can't do it Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we could put a hold on perhaps like, the 14th. Derek will be back in town, and give everybody a week to catch up.
I'm assuming if we're going long...
It's because we've got questions. What do you, well, Peter, you want to be a part of this conversation?
I do.
Yeah, he's right. We kind of need you here.
So, the question we're having is, how many days, and then how we ought to structure it? If we can't get it done two days, is it better to go three? Is it better to break it up? You've been running this train for a while, so tell me your thoughts.
I'll make it work whatever works for you guys, but if there are, like, you know, two days in a row, three days in a row begins, things back up, you know, we're making notes, you know, rapidly as, you know, the commissioners were talking, and then now will be your turn. You'll want to see those, you know, those changes. And so, it becomes a little difficult when we've got back-to-back-to-back meetings, and we don't, aren't able to bring those back immediately.
Peter, would you...
We could, I understand the schedules are tight.
Would you prefer that we do a day, give you time to put your notes together, and if we need another day, then get breaks in between, so you have at least some time to get your notes back?
No, I think as long as you are aware that there won't be an immediate turnaround with something that happened on Tuesday, and you expect to see it back on Wednesday, I can make it work anyway for you, whatever works best.
He does make a good point on making changes and us actually seeing them. I mean, sometimes, you know, getting that all written out, you know, isn't an overnight job. And making sure that all our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed, so I think...
Well, you've been through it.
I've been through it before.
If I can make a suggestion, we've got the 30th and 31st set. Again, we're going to have, as Supervisor Mills pointed, we're going to have a lot of public comment, there may be some changes. If we put a holder on the 14th, if we need it, then we could have those changes brought back to final on that date. Because if we have a lot of changes, you're going to need a couple of days to incorporate them, I'm guessing.
And there may be need to coordinate with our outside counsel, or the EIR consultant on some of these things, too. And that's another thing we'll need to check, to see if outside counsel will be available. We want to make sure that they're here for those meetings as well.
Please do.
I'm open to doing it that way.
That's fine.
Absolutely. I think that would be us putting more concentration and making sure we have a solid document.
So, Peter, so we'll pull the board on keeping the 30th and 31st, putting a hold on the 14th, should we need it. Hey, if everything goes great on the 30th, we could just stay up all night and get it done. But that's not likely.
The other thing to keep in mind is that we will need some time to prepare the findings document.
Yes.
That will, you know, we go back and look at each of the mitigation measures, all of the decisions that are made, the direction we get from the board, and we'll want to work very closely with council to make sure that document is prepared. So, at the end of the 31st, or the 14th, or whatever day you finish with it, it will be, provide direction to us to come back with the final findings document for final approval, so we won't be quite ready to go then. And that will take a few weeks to do. We want to make sure that is, our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed on that one.
Okay, well, if we can't, let's do this, let's block the 30th, 31st, put a hold on the 14th, and then at that time, you know, either on the 31st or the 14th, Derek can tell us when the findings will be done, and we'll see it again.
I'm good with that. I'm fine.
Yes? Marita?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Next poll. Don't run, Peter. Deadlines for cultivation and dispensaries, or what, and progress? I mean, I'm sure staff's working on stuff, but I, you know, how fast do we want to push this? And I think, I think I would personally want to see something possibly in front of the Planning Commission in August, in my opinion.
So, the question is, you're pulling, I guess it's more of a general question, a timeline?
Timeline. Yeah, cultivation and the dispensaries ordinance are two separate animals, so the cultivation...
So, the question is scheduling question.
Scheduling question.
When should we book the, and I think that falls within announcements stuff.
I think that's something that should be given to the C.O. He knows how we feel, and he's planning on coming back with timelines anyway. We've discussed it before, we know staff is currently working on it, so if we say we want it before the Planning Commission, I mean, maybe that's realistic, and maybe it's not.
Right.
I think we should delegate that to the C.O. to come up with the recommendation.
Let me reword what I'm saying, then, because I do agree with you, Marita, that we should let the C.O. be able to take the reins on the priority and move it forward with staff. I mean, I don't want to put a deadline there that's unattainable. Making sure that we do have our i's dotted and our t's crossed, and protect the county in its entirety. Let's, let's put it, you know, now that the general plan's going to be before us, and we're working on this, let's put it on our highest priority to move forward on this. And I would pull the board on that, with the C.O. taking the lead on it.
I thought we've already done that.
Well, before we get into that, if I can interrupt.
Yes.
I've been, I talked to Mr. Mall, and I did talk to Megan a little bit about an ordinance that came before this board on January 2018. That ordinance had gone through Planning Commission, that ordinance had an EIR attached to it, and it was very close to being passed by this board, there was one item that we didn't agree on. And so, is it, would it interest the board to pull on bringing that ordinance back for us to look at? Have the C.O. bring it back, have Peter bring it back, for us to look at it, and see if it's something that we can work with to get through, versus going all through this long route that we're going through?
Ken, do you have any input? Megan?
I just wanted to remind the board, you know, staff is working on the direction that the board has previously given as far as drafting an ordinance. That ordinance is going to be, you know, internally vetted for comments from other departments, and we are working with Peter for Sequa purposes, and processing that through the Planning Commission. The ordinance that Supervisor Toffenelli is referring to was before the board in December of 2017, beginning January of 2018 is when it was discussed. All of that was prior to some of the state regs being adopted, and it also only contemplated medical, so there would be some necessary changes to adult use, as well as the state regs that have been brought down since that time, which staff has addressed in the draft ordinance that we are working on, that Peter's working with Sequa on, and that we are anticipating will be coming to the Planning Commission in, you know, as soon as possible, once we have Sequa, and the i's dotted, t's crossed, as it relates to Sequa, and comments from internal departments. At this point, our hope, whether it's optimistic or not, is to have that before the Planning Commission in August, beginning of September.
So, just so I'm clear, so if we brought back what we were working on December 18, modified it, bring it up to state, I'm not so sure it was just for medical, but that's beside the point, we, that we couldn't do that?
I suppose the board could do that, but we are working, I guess the direction that I'm, we have two different things going now. Right now, staff is working on the direction that the board had given us in February and in, or March and April, February, April, and that is working towards the Planning Commission here in another, you know, month, month and a half, where the document that Supervisor Toffenelli is referring to would need to be modified. And I, you know, I would caution the board, because then staff would have to reevaluate where we're going with the current direction, to then go back to that document to analyze to what extent that would need to be changed, and/or brought up to speed with current regs, and whether we would even be able to rely on that EIR, because of the changes that would be required for state purposes, the state regs, and adult use, unless the board doesn't want to consider that.
If I may interject, you're saying you're to the point, point now, where if we started going the route that Supervisor Toffenelli's talking about, we may regress in part of the process, and we may have to go back to the drawing board on some of what you've already gotten done?
Yes.
Thank you. So, I think they're, they've taken some large steps forward, and we're to a point where we can move forward with what the board gave direction as to this year?
Correct.
So, what date will the Planning Commission see this? So what date will the Planning Commission see this?
We said we were going to allow, we were going to allow the C O to work on that and come back with us, to us, what for a date.
Can we get that date next week? In announcements?
Certainly, we will work with staff to lay out an anticipated timeline like I'd previously indicated. Our hope was to have it to the Planning Commission sometime in August or beginning of September, but if the board would like a date certain, we will certainly work toward that on the understanding that there might be other circumstances that would necessitate moving that date if needed.
If everyone will allow me to go back to the original polling and amend it to let, let the C O take the lead and let staff continue in the direction that they've been working and then come back and report to us on what the C O has found during the next meeting and with, with a possible tentative date in mind.
Okay.
Could we, could we pull the board on that? And that would be, would you be okay with that, Gary?
I'm fine with it. I'm fine with it.
Yes?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Marita?
Yes.
What's measured is done, so yes, I agree.
Okay. That's, I'm going to leave my polling at that. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Toffenelli, do you have your report?
Yeah, I have a CPDA, our, our, our meeting tomorrow morning, or Wednesday morning, excuse me, Wednesday morning. Also have the Child Support Agency meeting next week.
All right, I have nothing to report. With that, we will, this meeting is closed.